I'm gonna call our April 6, 2023, meeting of the Baldwin County Planning is on commission to order. And at this time, if you will stand with me, we'll have a pledge of allegiance, or we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Father, we're mindful that we have the good fortune of living in a great county, a great place, Father. We're so thankful for that. We're thankful for our elected officials, our first responders, our county staff, those that work hard to prepare for meetings like this, and Father to take care of business at hand. And so, Father, we're thankful for all of these, and it is a great place to live. Now, Father, we pray for insight and wisdom as we conduct business here tonight. And may we honor you in how we conduct ourselves, may we show respect to each other, and we pray all this now in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a quick announcement, I'm gonna call roll, but before I do that, so that many of you will know, three of our cases are going to be tabled tonight. We will call them up and then we'll take action on those, but I'm gonna tell you what they are in case you're here for those, so that you'll know. Mill Creek, Tealwood, and Gaineswood. Those three developments have been requested to be tabled. They needed to get more information together before they could present. And so, if you're here for those three, just know we're gonna bring them up at the very first. We'll call it order, we'll go ahead and vote to table those. So with that, I am going to call roll, and then I'll make some other announcements. All right, Brandon Bies, Robert Davis, Plumer Tonsmire, Jason Pageant, Michael Mullik, Greg Seibert, Bill Buier, Jamie Stradiger, Mike McKenzie, Rebecca Till, Diane Burnett, and Michael Fletcher. All right, let me have a call. Let's go ahead and take care of our minutes from our, we had actually three meetings. We had our work session on March 2nd, we had a regular meeting on March 2nd, and then we had our special call meeting on March 23rd. You've each received a copy of those minutes. Are there any corrections to any of those before we vote? All right, if not, I'll entertain that we, a motion to approve all three of those?
If we approve all three.
Okay, Bill has made a motion that we approve those. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Davis, second emotion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So first thing is, turn off your cell phones, please, so we don't have interruptions during the meeting. That'd be most helpful. Second thing is, if you're here to speak on any item tonight, hopefully you stopped at the front desk and filled out a form, or signed up to speak. We'll be calling each item, opening a public hearing for those items. Our staff will make a presentation to us, we'll let the developer speak, we'll ask questions of staff and developer. And then, when I have the list, I will call on those that have signed up to speak. You can already tell, we have a pretty good sized crowd here tonight. So we typically try to, I hate to use the word restrict, but we try to limit you as much as possible to three minutes. So another thing that helps, don't be too repetitious. If somebody else has already said something that you agree with, just say you agree with that, and if you have something new, then just don't be repetitive with it. That takes too much time. We'll be here for a long time. We have 18 items, I think, on the agenda. We're getting ready to deal with three of them. But please, if you want to speak, sign up out front. I will call on you to come up to speak. You'll need to come to the front here and tell us who you are and your address, and then for the record, and we'll hear you at that point. Okay, with that, I am then going to go ahead and bring up to the front of the agenda these first three cases. Mill Creek subdivision, we have a request to table that item, and the staff need to even, need to speak to these?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So these three particular cases, and Mill Creek is the one that you just opened up. I'm sorry, is that right?
Right.
So with Mill Creek and two other subdivisions, we had some questions come regarding the traffic study. We looked at those a little bit further and had some concerns about the growth rate, the failure to consider some schools and some new subdivisions in the area. We raised those questions to the developer. It was relatively short notice, unintentional on our part, and they said, well, there's no way we're gonna be able to get with our traffic engineer and resolve these questions before tonight's meeting. And all three of those have requested to table their items, so that way they can go back to their traffic engineer and have them relook at that data.
Okay, thank you, Matthew.
And just remember, because this is a request within seven days of the meeting, the actual tabling actually have to come from the planning commission, since the applicant, it doesn't sound through any fault of their own, but are not within that seven day, or outside of that seven day window, under our bylaws.
Thank you. All right, so let's take these one at a time. Mill Creek subdivision phase one, this is case number SPP 23-4. Do I have a motion that this be tabled?
I make a motion, we table till next meeting.
Mr. Bies has made a motion to table.
Second.
I'll second it. Mr. Mullik is second the motion. Any comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. The second one is case number SPP 23-2, which is Tealwood Estates, subdivision phases one through seven. Do I have a motion to table this item?
I'll make a motion that we table this till our next meeting.
All right, Mr. Mullik has made the motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Bies, second emotion. Any comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on the third item, case number SPP 23-3, Gaineswood subdivision. Have a motion that we table this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recused from this vote.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we table this till our May meeting.
Okay, Mr. Mullik has made the motion that we table.
Second.
Mr. Buier, second emotion. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so just that, all of you know, if you came for any of those three items, they have been tabled and will be getting additional information and hopefully be on next month's meeting.
That's correct, and we will resend out the letter notices to everybody if it does end up going on next month's meeting. And that's certainly the presumption at this time that they will be on next month's agenda.
And Matthew, that'd also be online on the Baldwin County website with the agenda for this meeting, if anybody wanted to go online to see if it was gonna be on the agenda for May. Is that correct?
That's correct. You'll be able to see it posted online as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go back to the front of our agenda then. We'll go to case number Z 23-5, the Strack property. I'm gonna open the public hearing for this item. Ms. Boykin, you gonna, oh, yeah, I almost, thank you, sir. Does anybody need to disclose any prior communications on this item? Okay, Ms. Boykin.
This is the request, please, uh, four acres from RSF 1 to B 2. The subject property is located in Planning District 37. It is currently zoned RSF 1, single family, and it's located on the east side of State Highway 181, just south of Windmill Road. It's currently used residential and commercial. The applicant is asking that it be rezoned to B 2, which is a neighborhood business district. His purpose for the B 2 request is to allow for the continued use as commercial, and the front part, he's undecided on future, but he knows that he wants it to be commercial. As you can see on the zoning map, to the north of the subject property and to the west and east is in the city of Fairhope. Most of these zonings are residential or PUD. To the south, the parcel is in the county, and it's zoned RSF 1. Here's a picture of the subject property, the front part, it shows the current home on there. And then in the rear is this metal building. And then here's some of the adjacent As stated before, it's used residential, residential and commercial. This is along 181. The applicant did state, he thought that maybe the state was gonna take, or has, when they widen 181, they could take some of his property, which would make the home close to the, to the road. He had mentioned about possibly demoing the home, or either turning it into a business. So that's why he's asking for B 2. We didn't have many comments. We did have some from ALDOT about the access, but he will, if anything is done to this property or built, he would have to come back for commission site plan, and we need to make sure that he has his ALDOT permit. And as stated previously, he's requesting to go from RSF 1 to B 2. Staff sees no issues with this request, and we have recommended approval.
Selena?
Yes.
You may know, do we know what the use is? So I'll assume that we've already checked to make sure it fits with the NB 2, the existing use?
If the use is existing, it would be grandfathered in. This, I believe, we'll have to ask the applicant for the definite use. This was, this is in Planning District 37, which recently became zoned. He could continue the current use, except for if he wanted to expand the business or do anything different on the subject property.
And even if we didn't approve the, or it be a recommendation of the county commission, if it was not approved, his use is still grandfathered in, correct?
Correct, whatever it is used for, used as right now.
Anybody, any other members of the planning commission have any questions for staff? All right, so I only have one signed up, and I think it's the applicant, Patrick Strack. Do you want to come up and speak?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? He may need to come up at all. All right, is there anybody else that did not sign up? I'm gonna try to always do this, but hopefully you did sign up. Okay. Well, if nothing else, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any other comments from staff?
I was gonna mention, we've had several pre-app meetings with other people along this road, wanting, thinking about going to commercial with the widening, but this has been the first one we've had come forward. But we've had many meetings with different citizens wanting to rezone property right there to commercial.
Okay, yeah, I suspect we're gonna see a lot of that with 181 changes.
I have a question for staff. Once we know what the usage is, and this is, if this was to be approved for B 2, under that usage, I'm sorry, once we know what the usage is, if it's not under there and it's being grandfathered in, how do we handle that, that we're rezoning it today for a gymnastics place, but that's not under one of the usages? We need, don't we need to know?
So currently, it's zoned residential.
Right.
And this is the byproduct of new districts being formed. Sometimes you just miss a property that probably should have come in as commercial, and most likely, there's an argument, maybe it should have come in as B 2 or B 1. So it's already a grandfather non-conforming use on a residentially zoned piece of property. So B 2, whatever the current use, which I know we discussed with the applicant at the time, and it didn't raise any concerns, I think it's just being used as almost like a small storage slash warehouse. It's gonna be more conforming now than it currently is by switching it to B 2, and his goals were to, in the long term, use it for a B 2 type use. And when he brings that, most likely it will require a commission site plan approval that y'all will get an opportunity to review.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the rezoning request.
As a recommendation of the county commission.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Davis has made a motion. We recommend to the county commission that this be approved. Do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. McKenzie, second the motion. Any comments, questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved. All right, our next item is case number Z 23-7, Penterelli, I probably said that wrong, property. I'll open the public hearing on this, and I'll ask if anyone needs to declare any prior communication on this item. Ms. Rhodes?
All right, good afternoon. This is a request for the Penterelli property to rezone five acres from RSFE to RA. It's located in Planning District 15. The subject property is located to the west of County Road 54 East and south of County Road 64 in Daphne. The current uses are commercial and vacant, and the applicant is Frank McKinley, and the owner is Augustine Penterelli. The request is to rezone to RA to allow for the expansion of existing mini storage, which is not allowed within the current zoning district. Here's the locator map and the site map. The adjacent zoning is RSFE to the north, south, and west, and to the east of the subject property is RA in RSF 2, with the adjacent land uses being residential. Here are the property images, the subject property, and then the surrounding property images, the current zoning requirements and the proposed. And you can see that a mini warehouse is an allowable use within RA zoning with commission site plan approval. The zoning of the property is RSFE currently. The adjacent properties are RSFE, RA, and RSF 2, and staff believes the change to RA is appropriate for the proposed mini warehouse expansion. Zoning for Planning District 15 was adopted by the county commission in August of 2006, and it was zoned RSFE at the time it was adopted. And as you can see with the image to the right, there have been few rezonings since then. The 2013 master plan shows a future land use designation of residential for the subject property, and if this rezoning is approved, the future land use will have to be amended to commercial. And staff feels that this proposed amendment does support a logical expansion, as we can see more intense uses to the west. No agency comments were received, and staff does not see any problems and recommends approval of this rezoning request.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just chime in real quickly on this, I do want to clarify, staff is in no way indicating our support for a future mini warehouse here. The applicant told us that that's what they're considering, and we said, well, you know, one option is to rezone to RA, but you're taking that risk of going to a downzoning essentially in that situation. And, but there's no indication that, that y'all would be obligated, or we as staff would be obligated to support a future mini warehouse development. In fact, they'll have quite a few buffers that they'll have to put in and everything like that, if they do pursue that route. But I just want to make that very clear. We're not saying, will you support this to allow for a future mini warehouse? That's, I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burnett?
I do have a question. So the rezoning request is for agriculture, but the amended map would be commercial?
This is gonna be for the use of the property.
Yes, so you would only amend it, amend the future land use map if it did turn commercial? Is that right?
That, that's, well, that's, that's a great question. I think that might be a misstatement in the staff report. Selena, can you chime in on this? But I think the future land use would switch to.
Because it said at the time that it's rezoned, that it, the map would be amended to be commercial. That's the way I understood it.
For the future land use map, if it is, if it is rezoned to RA, rural agriculture, then the future land use map will be changed to agriculture.
Okay.
Even if a commercial use is allowed under RA, it would, the future land use still would be.
So it would be agriculture, not commercial?
Correct, yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
We apologize. That, that does appear to be a mistake in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. That's good. Any other questions?
I have one question. So we are not conforming at current time with how we are zoned and how we're using the property?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, we have several sign up to speak. Frank McKinley? Okay, you want to come to the?
Light should come on.
All right.
There you go. I'm the one that's requesting it, because there's already mini storage on this facility. It's been there, and I don't know how long, maybe 20 years. So the best and highest use probably for this, I'm thinking, is just expansion of the mini storage. There wouldn't be any really impact to traffic, or infrastructure, or anything, because it would be empty, other than solving some more storage problems from all the other neighborhoods and expansion in the area.
Okay.
That's basically all I have.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to speak for the family, just to let you know pretty much what was said, that it's already a storage building on a little bit more than one acre. So this would be to expand it, and Mike has had, Penterelli has had those storage buildings for probably 30 years, as he said. Excuse me, so they've been there, they're 12 and a half acres behind that. It's still leased for agriculture, and that's what he does. He leases it annually for farming. He just wanted to allow them to expand the storage buildings across the front.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna, hope I get this last name right. Johanna? Weir?
Ryer.
Ryer, thank you, sir.
We're all the same family.
Okay, do you each want to speak, or if you, or one of you speak for the group?
Hi.
Hello. I live across the street from the storage unit.
Okay.
And I don't like looking at that storage unit, but we own the three houses that go from that storage unit, the next house, and we have a school there on the corner, the Bell Forest Elementary School. The traffic already backs all the way up past the storage units. So putting another business there, or expanding, or enlarging it, whatever, would just cause more traffic on that street, but not to mention the many of times at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, I was woken by people coming in and out of that storage unit place. My children trying to sleep, and you just don't know what kind of business people are doing there at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. So that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I knew Mike Penterelli.
You're Frank?
I'm John.
Oh, John, okay.
And Mike built that 10-unit storage building many years ago. We didn't have zoning back then.
Right.
So I fought for zoning a second I saw that thing go up, to stop what was happening. And now, my nightmares coming true. They're trying to put more in there. You know, like she said about the traffic, you know, it's really bad, takes like three or four lights to go down the street, you know, down 64, because it's already pretty bad with that. I mean, it was zoned for what, a single family? Couple cars, maybe? It's just gonna be worse, I think. Sorry about that.
Okay. This must be Frank?
I'm Frank Ryer.
Okay.
I live across the street from the proposed area. I don't want it.
Okay.
Also, the driveway is right strictly across the street from my four great grandsons.
Okay.
Two, five, six, and seven.
Okay.
The stupidest thing I ever, please, do one more thing for me. Turn up the volume? I haven't heard a damn thing over there.
Okay.
Can't hear, turn up the volume?
We'll get him to speak up. All right, anybody, anybody I missed? All right. Ms. Rhodes, you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Anybody have any questions? I'm gonna close the public hearing. I entertain a motion. This will be, this will be a recommendation to the county commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend approval to the county commission.
And Mr. Bies has made a motion that we recommend that it be approved to the county commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burnett, second the motion. Any comments or questions on the motion?
And Mr. Chairman, I know I've already stated this, but as a reminder, they will have to come back with an application back in front of these, this commission if they want to do a storage unit. And at that time, the store, the commission can require them to put trees along the road, so that way it will potentially even make it less visible than it is today. But we are not approving a storage unit today.
Correct. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Matthew.
I have one point of clarification with, if this is approved, are there additions or renovations that will be required for what's existing? Or is it just grandfathered in as is?
So, they will have to bring that unit into compliance, and there are major compliance issues with that existing unit. That's something we told the applicant about. And so, that's just something they'll, if they decide to move forward, if it gets rezoned, and then they decide to move forward with an application for a mini storage, they're going to have to find, to make a decision on how they'll resolve those nonconformities.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve to the, send a recommendation to the County Commission to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. All right. Open up case number SB 23-3, Henderson Family Subdivision Variance. And I'll open the public hearing on this one, and ask if anyone needs to clear any prior communication on this item. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Planning commissioners, you don't see a lot of subdivision variances, and hopefully, this one is pretty simple, that we can go through very quickly. I'll lead off, as you see here on screen, calling out subject property that you see right there with the call-out balloon. Subject property is outlined in blue. I think the main thing I want to emphasize here, this is just outside the brand-new Planning District 39. So, this area is not zoned, it is just across the street from that new Planning District. What we have before you, planning commissioners, the, on the right of your screen, this is not a subdivision plat, but that is for information-only, to show you a, the outline of parcels that would be created by a family exemption, should this variance be approved. As you see, Ms. Henderson is included up there, and I'll try to briefly explain the situation. Ms. Henderson and two of her siblings were one-third owners. Each had one-third interest in a single piece of property. And two of the siblings unfortunately passed away before they were able to convey portions of that property to eligible family members under the, under the provision of subdivision exemption. So, what I have on screen for you here, because we don't see a lot of these, this is the provision from the subdivision regulations that grants this planning commission the authority to grant variances. And so, planning commissioners, I think I can probably summarize it the simplest way by just simply explaining the staff recommendation to you, that we're recommending approval of this variance. You'll note in item one, that Ms. Henderson, she would, is the applicant, should this be approved, she would be the applicant for a family exemption. The property information you see there is on screen. One of those resultant parcels of that family exemption division would remain in her ownership. You see, the second one there is item B, that would be conveyed to one of her, would be conveyed to her nephew, who is the son of her deceased brother. Similar situation with item C, and you see the family member listed right there. Commissioners, Mr. Aaron Collins with SE Civil is with us here today, he can provide, if there are questions, he can provide us more information about the family and the history. What I would tell you, commissioners, we will probably see this type of request on occasion in dealing with exemptions, and know that the supporting documents that were provided to staff clearly explain the family relationships and the unique situation here, and why we have a variance before you, which is recommended for approval, commissioners. Happy to answer questions based upon staff.
So, just to make sure I understand this, Buford, this is, where, you're asking us, they're asking us for a variance, which would then, this would be an administrative family split? So, we wouldn't necessarily see this case again. We're, we're setting up the framework to allow y'all to accomplish this.
That's correct. The, the regulatory authority here is the requirement in the subdivision regulations in terms of the eligible family members of an exemption. And so, knowing that unfortunately, the, the siblings passed away prior to their ability to convey property to eligible family members, that the nephews are ineligible for an exemption, this would grant them the ability to make that request, and the surviving sibling would be able to carry out that conveyance in lieu of the family members that passed.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, because if they were of the proper family relation under our subdivision regulations, then they're exempt from the subdivision regulations, and they still, they apply for that exemption in planning and zoning based on their application, and if they qualify, then gives them an exemption letter, which then will do the deed and attach that exemption letter to it. So, because of the death, or the intervening death, after the, the property got to the two deceased siblings, you know, then them deceasing, then broke that chain of the family definition per our subdivision regulations.
Burnett?
Commissioners, I think we'll, and we will probably see this on occasion.
Just clarification, there's only one variance being requested, and it has something to do with the exemption of family members, that's it.
That's correct. And Commissioner, that is why we were very explicit in here, in the, basically, the chain of custody to which the resultant parcels will be conveyed. And then, you, this planning commission, will not see this in the form of a subdivision. As, as our legal counsel mentioned, this would go forward, if you approve this, this will go forward as a family exemption to be processed by staff.
I can say, having worked for the county years ago, I must have done hundreds of exemption cases, I can't remember one of these. So, it, I heard what you said, it might come up, but it's, I think it's a rarity, so...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would agree, and that's why I say we would probably only see this on occasion.
Yeah.
And, and this is, you know, and this is certainly a, a situation that I think warrants this type of variance.
Okay, any other questions for staff? I have Aaron Collins signed up to speak.
Chairman, commissioners, Aaron Collins, SE Civil. I'm really here just to answer any kind of questions you got. I think it's a, a series of unfortunate events for this family. They died within a one-year window, both the Rosemary's brothers, and, you know, speaking from my experience, I wouldn't know, if I didn't know anything about planning, that I would have to subdivide that property, you know, so it's kind of a new case.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other questions? Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm if we approve the variance?
All right, Mr. Buford has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullick, second the motion. Any question, comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, our next item is case number SC 22-53, Fiddler Estates. Does anyone need to declare any prior communication on this item? Ms. Booth?
So, before you, we have a request for a five-lot subdivision. It's located in Silver Hill, off of Hottlebar Road and County Road 9. It's located in Planning District 14, which is not implemented zoning at this time. Total property is 25.27 acres, and they're requesting five lots. All lots will front on existing paved roads. There's not a traffic study required, there were no drainage improvements required. A wetland delineation was not performed, and the applicant has invoked Section 5.2.2E of the subdivision regulations, and displayed the applicable 50-foot wetland setback. This is your Planning District map. An enlarged map. Your vicinity map, aerial map. This is your drainage report, again, there's no drainage improvements required, there are no drainage improvements required. This is your drainage plan. Utilities. Wetland map, and it's also showing on your screen are the 50-foot wetland setback. And staff does recommend approval of the subject development, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? I know I'll butcher this name, and I'll apologize upfront. Noel, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, you'll have to help me with that when you get up here.
Thank you. My name is Noel Quarry. I'm an adjacent landowner to their property. Lately, we've been deluged with developments, flooding into Fish River. So, when the river floods, it turns brown or red, takes a little time to go away. A lot of people have cut their trees down. This property has a huge ditch, a gully that runs through it, along the Alabama Power Line servitude, and that gully feeds into our property before it goes into the river. It's very elevated, we drain just about the entire area, because we're low and everybody else is high. So, the last thing we need is more water, or more, anything holding the water up at all. I'm very concerned about the fact that they haven't done wetland modifications, we had to do it on our property. I'm concerned about where this property is going to be, how it's going to be subdivided for road use. If they start using, if they get permission from Alabama Power to use their servitude, which they are doing on another part of their, their servitude outside of this property, the traffic is going to be, not going to be able to handle it. It's a very narrow road, it used to be Red Barn Road, before the bridge went out a long time ago. I'm also, you know, so the access is a big deal for me, the drainage is a big deal, and the lot thing is hard for me to understand how they're going to divide this up. And, you know, I understand that they're doing this, selling the property, so that the Fiddlers can continue to farm. I understand that their daughter is a state representative now, so this political ties to all this. But this is just a nightmare waiting to happen. My other concern is that the sign about this, this hearing did not, I was told that it was there, but it did not appear until yesterday. So, a lot of people in my neighborhood didn't even know about it. We only knew about it because we got the certified letter, since we're adjacent. So, that concerns me also, you know, and then my other thing, too, is that the smallest lot's going to be three acres, so are they going to sell this all at one time to make this more appealing? Or can this be bought, and then they come back and resubdivide it? The last thing we need is more matchbox homes with no drainage and no retentions. That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll address some of those in a moment, let me get the other. Joe Manjone?
Hey, pass.
Okay. Well, just let me address some of those things. They did do a drainage study, and it has been looked at by the County Engineering Department, and it's been approved. If they did do any more subdivision property, they would have to resubmit back to this, to this group, and we would have to review that as another application. And so, we would see that at another time, if that were the case. I do know that this, and I'm sure the county knows, that part of this roadway, definitely in flooding stages, is not passable. So, the lots, the three lots to the west would be locked in until the waters recede. I actually know people that live down there, and they are stuck when we have big floods, they cannot get out. So, I don't know if that changes anything, but I'm just, it is a, a drainage nightmare down there. But they are doing five large lots, so that's what's before us. Any other questions from planning commission members of staff?
I would remind the planning commission, we do have a representative of the Highway Department here, who could potentially speak to any concerns regarding the roadway, if necessary.
And Ms. Campbell, she's here, I saw her earlier. Could you speak to the wetland? He mentioned the fact that they did not do a wetland delineation, but just let us know how that process works as we move forward. They have, they did not, but they did locate the wetlands as shown on a map, and they have, in addition to that, put a 50-foot buffer beyond that. But if they do development in the future?
Yes, sir. So, in our subdivision, we do have the provision that allows them to use the county's wetland mapper with a 50-foot wetland buffer instead of the 30 required. That, our wetland mapping, on our wetland mapper is very accurate. It has hydroxols included, and along with the National Wetland Index mapping. So, the 50-foot gives the assurance that the wetlands are being protected. If any development occurs in the area around those wetlands, we would require an official wetland delineation from a wetland professional, and then we would also require any permits necessary for any fill or any activities in the wetlands.
Thank you. All right, any other?
Mary, this is unzoned district?
It is currently unzoned.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Can you address the signage that the gentleman was talking about?
So, that's a great question. Our team does a very good job of taking a photo when they place a sign up, and then it gets uploaded to the file. We can look into that, and they even report back later in the meeting. One thing to note, that under our subdivision regulations, there's no requirement that we post a sign. We post them as a courtesy, though, nevertheless. And it should have been posted, or I, we try and get them well in advance of the meeting, so we can find out the exact date on that.
But the signage, in addition to the notices that were sent out to all the adjacent, adjacent property owners?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right, was there any someone else that did not sign up that wanted to speak to this? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve?
Okay, Mr. Bice has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McKenzie, second the motion. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next, next case is SC 23-1, Brown Subdivision. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Mitchell?
All right, this is a three-lot subdivision, and in the packets, it's called Brown Subdivision, and on the notification letters, but it actually had to be renamed RB for Robert Brown, the owner, because the Brown subdivision name is already taken. So, that's why the plat, if you notice, has a different name than what was in the packet. So, this is the Planning District map. It's in Planning District 17, so this is not zoned. It's being divided into three acres. Traffic study is not required, due to the number of lots, and then drainage, there are no new streets, and so, they just submitted a narrative that shows existing drainage. And I rotated it here for clarity's sake. It has County Road 3 to the north, and Highway 98 to the south. Locator map. And again, here's the drainage narrative, utility letters, there will be a mix, some, one lot has access to sewer, and the others will be on septic. And there were some non-jurisdictional wetlands, so there's being protected by a 5-foot buffer. And the county recommends approval, or planning staff recommends approval, and there are no conditions other than the usual, that it be circulated for signatures and recorded within 90 days of approval.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Okay.
I think it's Lot 1 that has the wetlands on it, and it's also going to be a septic tank on that?
That's up to the Health Department to negotiate that, right. And I'm sure that they do have requirements about where that is in place. And this is a three-acre lot, so although it looks very large, and they still have half of the lot that would be available, but yeah, that's something that the Health Department reviews.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer that question, I'm pretty sure the Health Department requires a 25-foot buffer from wetlands, but, but they do watch those very closely.
Mm-hmm. Any question?
This is a, somewhat of a broader question. I noticed that the water for this development is coming from the city of Fair Hope, the one before it was coming from the city of Fair Hope. Apparently, the city of Fair Hope is having water issues that will dramatically escalate as we get into the summer months, dealing with drilling a new well, putting enough pressure in the tanks to be able to do this. But yet, all of these developments are now coming back to city water, and they're saying, no problem. Are you all taking a look at that, or not just this project, but other projects that are going to the city to get their water?
We make sure...
We make sure whenever we get one of the, what they call a "will serve" letter, that they have received the actual plat, and then if it's, and then it's within a certain amount of time. And so, as long as that utility company says that they can serve, then we accept that.
We also had a pretty lengthy meeting with the sewer providers, and Fairhope was involved with that, and we did address water at the same time. We're planning to have a follow-up meeting with all the water providers regarding requiring more detailed reviews. And we got some kickback. They kind of are all of the position, "We're not going to give these letters out unless we can provide it." And I, and our response was, "Well, then y'all can't blame us on the news for approving all these subdivisions that you can't provide water to." So, we're in discussions with them about maybe requiring a little bit more data with these letters to make sure they're just not being handed out like candy.
Any other questions? Do we have anybody signed up, Matthew? I don't have a.
I apologize. Let me pull that up. We do not have anybody signed up.
Okay. So, was there anyone that wanted to speak on this that did not sign up? All right. I'll close the public hearing. We'll just deal with planning commission. Any, Ms. Mitchell, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve of the 400 plat.
All right, Mr. Davis made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bice, second the motion. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item is case number SC 23-10 Phillips Place. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Ms. Booth?
Before you, is a request for a two-lot subdivision. It's located in planning district 18, and it's not currently zoned. The request is for two lots. Both lots will front existing paved road. There's not traffic study required, no drainage improvements required. A wetland delineation was prepared, and the jurisdictional wetlands are displayed on the plat, your planning district map. Up close picture of the preliminary plat showing the two lots overall. Vicinity map, aerial map. This is your written narrative. No drainage improvements required. The narrative has been reviewed and accepted by Ballina County Highway Department. This is your drainage plan. Utilities. The wetland report. This is your, this shows where the wetlands are, and they are in relation to what we show on our county map as well. So, staff does recommend approval, compliance of Ballina County subdivision regulations, with the general caveat that administrative, final plat approval is administrative, and final plat shall be circulated for signature and recorded within 90 days. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question, question, I'm sorry. Is there any lot width to depth ratio?
As long as the lot width meets whatever's required by the Section 5.1 of the subregs, then whatever depth it takes to make that lot area. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have one signed up, Aaron Collins. You gotta be on the payroll to be over there. That payroll.
Apparently so. I just, I'm here in case you guys have any questions. It's pretty straightforward on this one, though.
Okay. Any questions for applicants representatives? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right. That's all I had. Anybody else sign up, or didn't sign up that wants to speak to this item? All right. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing on this. If no more questions or comments from staff or planning commission, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval.
All right, Mr. Mullins made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Boo, you're second the motion. Any comments, questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is case number SC 23-12 Oak Ridge Park Subdivision. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Ms. Mitchell?
All right. This is a four-lot subdivision, and we're recommending approval with conditions. This is in planning district 5. It's on Highway 287 or Raven Road. Four lots, as I mentioned, no traffic study is required at this point. There are no new streets being proposed, and there has been a drainage narrative by Chris Leeb, and I have rotated the plat, so north is access to the right side. So, you can see the four lots, and lot number four is, there's an application coming forward. That's going to be a proposed RV park, so that's a future, future project. But at this point, it's just a simple four-lot subdivision. Here's Chris's drainage narrative, so you can see the, the existing drainage. And so, obviously, when they have a more detailed project, they will have to actually account for, for drainage and put in infrastructure improvements. There is a man-made pond on the property that's being protected with a 5-foot buffer. Utility letters. And we are recommending approval with conditions. At this point, they have applied for access permit with ALDOT, but they have not received that yet. So, so obviously, if they are not able to have access, that will affect us signing the final plat when they bring that before us.
These are on septic tank, right?
Yeah.
The earlier staff report said north Baldwin utilities.
It's currently, right. So, right now, sewer is not available, but Baldwin, north Baldwin Utilities says that they, they are working on it, and it will be available. And so, that obviously would be a condition of approval for the RV park, that that would actually have to be ready. So, at this point, because of the lot size, septic is acceptable.
Okay.
And so, they'd have to have something more concrete for the next phase.
Okay. Ms. Burnett?
I have a question. I'm sorry. I can't read the dimension, for it appears like it's a, this small leg of lot four.
That one is, it's a flag lot, so that that is the access point for lot number four.
Mm-hmm. So, what's the width?
Well, the way we count fly, width requirements, it's not just the width of the flag, it's the width of the entire thing. And I believe it was 50 feet. I can't, I can't see on this one as well.
The reason I'm asking is, more than likely, this lot four, well, it could be developed at a later date.
That's where the RV park will be. So, yes, ma'am, they are, they have a proposed development already in place.
So, I'm wondering if you might want to make that wider?
That is, I think it's 50, actually, it says 60 feet. It's 60 feet right now, and so on the RV park plan, they do have that as their entryway. They've got like a double lane. But, but yes, that would be something that they have to work out with ALDOT, as well as the highway department. So, at this stage, for just a basic subdivision, that is appropriate. But yes, they might find that if highway at the next level says that's not adequate, then, then they have to come back and re-subdivide and perhaps take land out of lot number one. So, that would be a potential issue. So, like I said, this month, we were, they presented this first as just a subdivision, so we analyzed it as just a subdivision, but that could be an issue in the future. You're correct.
But would now be the time to address it?
Well, we didn't receive the RV park application until after, and so, like I said, at this point, this is adequate. But if they did, if ALDOT says you have to have at least 80 feet or whatever, then, then yes, they would have to reconfigure lot, either lot two or lot one. And right now, it's all owned by the same person, so they could say...
It would be another replat.
Or yes, or a common line move. If they still own all the property, they could do a common line move between parcels. So, yes, you're right. They, they need to think ahead and make sure they're thinking about those. And like I said, right now, it's shown as 60 feet, but they might have to account for that later.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt for just a second. We do have Commissioner Matthew McKenzie here observing today, and he didn't want me to put him on the spot, but I know he's about to head out, and we do appreciate him for just sitting in and observing, so I just wanted to recognize him before he headed out.
I thought he was like an expert on flag lots.
If you have any questions regarding this development, I'm sure you'd be happy to answer them.
No, I don't. I just want to say thank you all for what you do up there. It, it takes a lot, and I really appreciate it. You don't get paid for it. Everybody hates you, and, and some people love you. So, I really appreciate you all for what you do for the county. But y'all have a great night, and happy Easter to everybody that's here. Thanks, sir. Okay, any other questions for staff? We have a few people signed up.
I have questions.
Well, I'm, I'm getting ready to call on staff, all those that signed up. All right, Carrie Catrit.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Carrie Catrit. I am one of the owners, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any for me.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have one. So, you're aware that there's a possibility, once ALDOT gets back to you, you may be changing the lot lines?
Yes, ma'am. And of course, we're hoping if we have to change any lot lines like that, we will still own them, and we could do a common, you know, lot line change at that point. But it's going to be a boulevard, is the plan, and we're, the engineer is hoping, the plan is to do a boulevard right there. And we are, he's already turned the plans in to ALDOT, and we are pretty sure that, that 60 feet is going to be wide enough. But we should know in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Carrie Parker?
Carl.
You're right, it does say that. And you look better as Carl than Carrie, too.
Hi, my name is Carl Parker. I am the site project construction manager for Novellus on the mega site. I appreciate your time. Let me come speak today. And I represent our attorneys in saying this. We are excited to see other people develop around our mega site and look forward to, especially, commercial properties coming in. I would like to address that we have no opposition to this at, at this time, but understand, just north, that this is contiguous to our property, and it's basically a $3.1 billion project, that I will have a tremendous traffic flow there. My craft during construction will be peak at 2,300 people. ALDOT is putting in a temporary light for us just north of that, and we will be putting in a permanent drive with a permanent light there with deceleration and acceleration lanes. And after the project is complete, we will have 1,000 to 1,200 permanent employees. I just wanted you all to know to be aware that we welcome any, especially, commercial developers, and really appreciate the council and the county supporting our project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all I had. Sign up. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this item? If you will come up and give us your name and address. You have to come up to the podium.
My name is Sandra Walton. I just want to be sure I understand what's going on here. And I'm okay with it. I just want to understand. This is, it said subdivision, but it's going to be an RV park?
Tonight, they're just doing a four-lot subdivision.
Four-lot subdivision.
If they do a RV park, we would see that.
Oh, it'll come back.
In a separate application.
Okay.
But tonight, it's just dividing.
I'm okay with it. I don't oppose. I just want to understand what's going on, so.
Yeah, tonight is just the four lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Mitchell, do you have anything else? Planning commission members have anything? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff conditions.
All right, Mr. Bice made a motion to approve with staff conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullins, second the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We've already dealt with our next three items on the agenda. So, our next case is case number SPP 23-06, the BFLC Calpin Creek Phase 3. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Ms. Booth?
Before you have a request, is a five-lot subdivision. It is located in planning district 13, currently unzoned. Proposed lots are five lots. There's no traffic study required, no drainage improvements required. Wetland delineation was not provided, so the applicant has invoked 5.2.2E of the subdivision regulations and displayed the applicable 50-foot wetland setback. There's your planning district map, enlarged map, or excuse me, enlarged plat overall. Vicinity map, aerial map. This is your drainage report. Again, no drainage improvements were recommended, and the written narrative has been reviewed and accepted by Ballina County Highway Department. This is your drainage plan. Utilities. These are your wetlands. And there is a note on the plat that any future subdivision or development of the lot shall comply with wetland requirements of subdivision regulations in place at the time of future development. Staff does recommend approval, subject to compliance with Ballina County subdivision regulations, with the following conditions. Specific condition, one, the applicant shall submit a turnout permit for the required common drives. Ballina County Highway Department will advise the applicant once the construction of common drives has been accepted. Then, on general condition, upon acceptance of installed common drives by Ballina County Highway Department, applicant shall submit a final plat application, and then planning and zoning staff will issue final, administrative final plat approval, and the final plat shall be circulated for signatures and recorded within 90 days. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Booth, we've done a bunch of these for this group. Is this the first we've had a re-sub of one of the large tracks? We've had one before?
Mm-hmm. A few.
Okay. I had a feeling we were going to start seeing these come back in like this. All right. Any questions for staff? I had no one signed up to speak. Is there someone that did not sign up that wishes to speak to this item?
Back in the back, Steve.
Oh, okay. Come up and give us your name. Hi.
We're newbies, so we're not real familiar with the process, but...
Well, give us your name and...
Okay, sure. I'm Anita, and this is my husband, Bob Wingard. And we have property that is just kitty corner to the properties that they are discussing. The properties that they're having, the five-acre parcels, what, how many acres per parcel is it?
Per lot is it? Three acres per lot, from what I understand?
Ms. Booth, can you, they were, yeah, they're, the smallest is three acres, and they might be a little, the others maybe just a little over three acres, but the smallest is three.
Okay. Now, can those be subdivided, again, once purchased by a person?
These individual lots themselves?
Yes.
Any future development would have to come back before this planning commission, but they would have to meet lot size requirements to be able to do that.
Okay. Because we've had dealings, unfortunately, with this company before, and we're a little apprehensive because they were trying to do some things that they came on our property about two years, maybe three years ago, and we had to call the county out and stop them. And they said, we had a big discussion, but I'm just concerned about the more load on 87 coming back towards some of the side streets, like we live on Burgett Lane. And the problem is that they're already experiencing a lot of traffic on 87. It used to be a country road, and no one really traveled it much. But now, the problem is, we're getting a lot of truck traffic with timber, understandably, a lot of timber's being cut down, clear cut. The other situation is, there's a lot of area, when you come around, curved area, that, in fact, yesterday, there was fatality right in front of our, our lane, bad accident. And I'm just worried about, you know, more, more traffic being dumped out there. And there's no stop signs, no, not that I want a stop sign or stop lights, but... in fact, yesterday, there was fatality right in front of our lane, bad accident, and I'm just worried about, you know, more, more traffic being dumped out there. And there's no stop signs, no, not that I want a stop sign or stop lights, but there's nothing to slow the traffic down, so more dumping out onto that constantly. Burgett Lane is already overflowing. They have had way too many development on that particular one lane that we've been down to the county discussing many times, our displeasure with the way things were handled, not so much by y'all, but by the people that had purchased large quantities of property, like five acres or more, and then subdivided into one acre. Well, that's not even possible for our little road that comes through. In fact, if someone's coming towards us, or a school bus, which there are kids down at the end, and they get dropped off, so there's a school bus activity, the, there's no place to pull over. And I'm afraid, too, that, you know, and, you know, well-inseptic water, we're worried about our water supply.
Yeah, my concern was about more the water, septic drain, oh, the drainage, I guess, has been dealt with, but if that's just the beginning, you know, since we're all agriculture around this area, you know, what is, what is the impact going to be, you know, on our water supply? So that's just one concern, and traffic is another. But, you know, like I say, this is just one, we weren't sure about what the facts were because we're kind of late to the game here, coming in, to know for sure how they were going to develop this particular area. But we just want to make sure that...
Well, there's, by the same group, I mean, they own all that property, so it's seeming that they're going to continue on. This is just the beginning, I would assume. The one's just going to pull out of property.
They certainly could, which is what they've done here. This was a, this is a resub of what they'd already done, and technically, they could do it again, and...
Right, exactly.
Matthew, we have already talked a little bit about the totality of this particular developer doing these all along, and looking at traffic at some point, and how did we leave that?
So we believe the county has the authority, in fact, we're confident the county has the authority through the county engineer's office to require additional traffic studies. But this particular developer recently did a larger subdivision that was approved, I don't know, three or four months ago, and as part of that, it triggered a traffic study in which they were required to review the entire road. And as part of that traffic study, it considered these existing proposed developments. It is high on our radar. In fact, we kind of had our own little back and forth with the developer recently about when that next traffic study might be required, so it could, it's going to, it is likely going to be required again in the future. The biggest issue here is, as y'all know, as planting commissioners, that this, this area is unzoned, and because it's unzoned, it is only governed by these checkbox subdivision regulations, and that limits, that really ties our hands.
And this probably won't make you feel better, but I see this sometimes as relative. For you folks that live out here, you see these, but we have other areas of the county where they're doing like 300-lot subdivisions, and they talk about traffic problems. So you compare that, they would love to see three-acre lot subdivisions in their area instead of two or 300-lot subdivisions. But we understand, and we are, we haven't lost sight of the traffic either. It's something that's being looked at, so.
And again, the quality of the water, I think, was another, you know, concern with more and more and more going in, and...
Well, I know they have city water coming along 87, supposedly. I didn't know whether they were going to eventually go to county water, I mean, or they're going to just, it's all going to be well-inseptic, so.
Okay.
Question?
Thank you, folks. Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. That's why we had no one else signed up. So any other questions, comments? Not all entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend approval subject to staff conditions.
Okay. Mr. Muller's made a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Booth, you're second the motion. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right. Our next case number is S-21007, and you're throwing me here with the PRR 23-4. This is Oak Place Mobile Home Park. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself for this one.
Okay, Mr. Bison's going to recuse himself. Ms. Booth?
Okay, to explain the PRR, that is permit extension request, and that's what we're here for, is to request a one-year extension of the final site plan approval for Oak Place Mobile Home Park. It's a 32-site mobile home park, located in, excuse me. This is your Planting District map. It's located in District 27. This is the overall site plan that was approved April 1, 2021, and they have a two-year preliminary or approval, and so it has expired. They do have 30 days from date of expiration to request extension request, which they have submitted in a timely manner. There is a change from what was originally approved. The retention pond is still in the same location, but the outfall structure has been relocated to the other side of the property, as indicated here on screen. This is your vicinity map, aerial map. Per the Bonn County subdivision regulations, a one-year extension within 30 calendar days of the initial expiration date is allowed. The subject request is timely and falls within the 30-day window. Due to engineer turnover, the applicant was unable to complete the construction review process within the two-year approval period. The applicant will be able to provide more information regarding the justification for the extension as needed. Section 9.5.3 allows for two one-year extensions. This is their first extension request, so a second and final extension may be requested within 30 days of April 1, 2024. So staff does recommend approval with the following conditions. One, the one-year final site plan approval extension will expire on Friday, April 1, 2024, at 4:30 PM. If a second final extension is granted, the extension request will be submitted by 4:30 on, or, excuse me, if a second extension is necessary, then the extension request shall be submitted by 4:30 on Monday, March 11th. There are no improvements above and beyond those originally approved that shall be installed except as granted by conditional approval from the Bonn County Highway Department, which was granted on March 17, 2023. Any expansion or alteration of the site of the proposed development, meaning the definition of a major change, shall necessitate additional review by the Planting Commission. After construction review is complete and Bonn County Highway Department has issued the subdivision permit approval, the applicant shall record the final site plan as built within Office of Probate Judge within 90 days and prior to obtaining a building permit. And I'll be happy to answer your questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Ms. Burnett?
Sorry. Does this plat still, does it meet your current subdivision regulations?
Yes, ma'am. Whenever they come before us for an extension request, we have to make sure that they are under current subdivision regulations. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Anybody else? Have no one signed up to speak on this? Is there someone that failed to sign up that wants to speak to this? Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Booth, you have a question? It says that, that the applicant will provide additional information regarding the justification for this extension. Is the applicant here to present that?
I would have...
Or explain that? He is. I think he just raised his hand. Can you come up to the mic and... Give us your name, please.
Hey, guys, my name is Cliff Davis. So the reason why we're requesting the extension, essentially, we started this process with one engineer. He left the company, went to another engineer, that engineer left the company, and then it was with a third engineer, and it just took a really, really long time to get the final site plans drawn up and get it all completed, and so that's part of the reason why we're so far behind. And we moved, just for further information, we moved that outfall structure, basically because there is, on that County Road 6 in front of the property, there's a live oak that's, I mean, gosh, it's got to be 200 years old, that would have had to been chopped down. And so instead of doing that, we decided to move the outfall structure back behind and come out on the other side of the live oak to prevent us from having to do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Not all entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend approval.
This will be on approval straight out by Planting.
I recommend approval for this mobile home park.
Subject to conditions?
Subject to conditions outlined by staff.
Okay. Mr. Muller's made a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Davis, second the motion. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay. Our next item is case number CSP 22-45, Sassy Bass Grill. Does anybody need to declare prior communication on this item?
Yes, I talked to Matthew about this. My husband's going to speak from the public, so I've talked to him, but I remain impartial.
Okay. You all speak.
We talk at home.
Mr. King?
Afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, again, planting commissioners. So we have commission site plan for, have a commission site plan up before you for Sassy Bass Maze and Grill. You see the location right there on your locator map. This is Long State Route 180, most commonly known as Fort Morgan Road. Putting the use table up here so you know why we're here today, and so in this planting district, you have the situation where you notice the neighborhood convenience store and the restaurant are permitted uses. However, the size of the facility is triggering the commission site plan. And as you see, this is in Planting District, Planting District 25. There's actually two parcels involved in this single site plan review. We'll call out the east property as well as the west property here on your aerial image. We'll give you the zoning map as well. You see B2 zoning in this particular area. You see your zoning classifications, and we'll call out State Route 180. So planting commissioners, this one is a unique site, and what I'll use our slide here, and we'll go into more detail in subsequent slides, but just to give you a snapshot, this is a single use on each property, so traffic study is not required. There are no drainage improvements required. We're here to explain how this complies with the zoning ordinance and local provisions. Now, Aldot and ADCNR, Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, will explain that subsequently. There's no wetland fill, so no involvement with Corps of Engineers. The landscape buffers are not applicable. We'll explain that, and the site, the improvements to the site are not triggering an NPDES rating. And like we do in a lot of cases, commissioners, we give you the snapshot of the piece of property. There are a few features I'll call out to your attention, Planting District 25, as we noted, as well as zoning classification. There is a variance that was approved last year that affects this site, and just in brief, as you see in yellow on the left side of your screen, it reduced the number of required parking spaces from 102 to 93, as you see. It also reduced the loading-unloading zone parking spaces from two to one, removed the requirement for the landscape buffers. You'll see on the right that we memorialize the case number of the zoning variance we were talking about. Again, traffic study's not required, no jurisdictional wetlands on this piece of property. In addition, the Fort Morgan Planning and Zoning Advisory Committee did not have any comments on this development. So commissioners, and also for our members of our audience, I'll ask you to follow the arrow up on screen so you can see the site photos. And commissioners, because of the variety of frontages on this site, we wanted to take, we wanted to be very explicit with several photos to explain the different points of view and where it is in relation to the roadway, because you have two different structures on two different parcels. Okay, commissioner, so we have here your overall site plan, and what I'll call out, first of all, is you see the existing structure there on the left. So one of the reasons we're here is a proposed addition to that existing structure, and we're calling out the locations of the 25-foot landscape buffers that were removed by the variance, as you see there. And we have a proposed change of use on that structure. So the structure you see there with this call-out balloon, that was a former volunteer fire department, Fort Morgan Volunteer Fire Department, that the developer has acquired and has the desire to, as you see, you may be able to see the text on there, to convert that to a neighborhood convenience store. We'll zoom in a bit here and call out that, as we mentioned earlier, there are no landscape buffers. However, some remnants of the zoning ordinance did still apply, so we do have some landscape islands, as you see there in yellow. And again, we'll call out the proposed addition. It's zoomed in a little bit better so you can see it. And again, the, that's, that is a condition of approval on that, on that unloading, in unloading zone. We'll explain when we get to the conditions of approval, change of use, we talked about earlier. On the other property, the former volunteer fire department, we're calling out here for you where they've added landscape islands, so still complying with zoning ordinance in that regard. We'll talk about the parking. It's going to be, there's a bit of a confusing issue that we've got to talk about on parking. We will get to that on a future slide. Here, we have elevation views of the building, and again, we're calling out for your information here, the existing building, the proposed addition, which actually is an upper-story addition. And again, from a different point of view, so below is a north elevation, so the building facing north, the upper is the west elevation, what you would see with the building facing each of those directions. Again, here's proposed addition. We're zooming here in on the addition area that is of the higher elevation. And then here, the site, what we have here is the actual floor plans of the existing building, the addition area, as you see on the far right. So this is the volunteer fire department proposed for a change of use, right there is the proposed addition. Zooming in here a little bit, in a little bit greater detail, because we like to reassure the Planting Commission that we have dumpster enclosures for the waste disposal area. What we have here for you, commissioners, is an actual copy of the document on the far left is the actual notice of action taken on the approved variance. The center is a supporting document, the center document is a supporting document to that variance where the, where Bill Lynn of U.S. Fish and Wildlife is explaining the rationale for not installing the landscape buffers due to affecting the Alamoah Beach Mouse habitat. On the far right is from the engineer of record regarding the wetland delineation. Commissioners, this is not in your packet, and knowing that we may have some questions on this property, I wanted to do this little bit of research. I was not able to find exactly when this property was rezoned to B2. It predates our electronic records, but for transparency, I did want to demonstrate that we did, did perform a record search. So the document you see on the left, that is the oldest electronic document I could find in our records, in that case, whereas zoning verification was done by the prior property owner when it was a Mexican restaurant. So that's the oldest document we can find. What you see on the right is the oldest electronic entry we could find, which was a land use certificate dating back to 2004, and that verified that at that time, it was still B2 zoning. Commissioners, I'll go through this pretty quickly, but as we typically do, we give you, we give you, so your staff report has it, the excerpts from the zoning ordinance for B2 zoning, the two uses we're talking about here are marked up here in yellow, and this is just the balance here of the, of the B2 zoning requirements, so you see the lot size requirements. Just in brief here, we like to furnish the local provisions of a planning jurisdiction when we have it in the staff reports. There do not appear to be any local provisions in Planting District 25 that affect this development. Commissioners, I'll summarize here, because here is where we give you, similar to a zoning change, but not as in-depth of a zoning change, as the land use justification. And what I'll just simply summarize here is saying is that this site has been in use, in this type of use, for many, many years, and the justification here is that it's likely a contributing use to the surrounding area that you would expect in a resort-type area. What I'll call out here for you, and we'll delve into this right here, and you'll see in the yellow text, there is a, in terms of county staff, what we believe to be is a misunderstanding between the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, as well as the U.S. Department of Interior, which is the Bureau of Land Management. And what that involves is, as many of you know, Fort Morgan Road has a tremendously wide right-of-way, and that area outside the edge of pavement, between the edge of pavement and the private property, is governed by the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Applicants have to deal with them separately for driveways and other issues. What we were not aware at the county level is that there are certain areas along Fort Morgan Road that, based upon information we've been furnished, where BLM also has authority, and so there's a misunderstanding about who's on first in this situation. We'll address it with a condition of approval. We'll address it with a condition of approval. As you've seen us do before, when we sometimes have issues with ALDOT, we condition the approval because we respect ALDOT's timelines on issuing turnout permits. This misunderstanding between ALDOT, ADCNR, and BLM has delayed the ability to obtain a turnout permit. We'll explain that in a condition of approval. This is some of that correspondence related to BLM and the authority that they are asserting they have. This is some correspondence between staff and ALDOT, and between staff copied to ALDOT and between Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, who typically has authority in this area. And if you can follow my cursor, like we talked about while I verbalized previously, this area between the edge of pavement and the private property is generally governed by ADCNR. And there is an issue that the applicant is going to have to work through with BLM and ADCR and ALDOT to get that coordinated in terms of their turnout permits. So with that, Commissioners, as you typically see from staff, we'll give you a list of standard conditions on a Commission Site Plan, so that way we memorialize certain things. We want to, we are altering that slightly for this application, as you see in the red text there. Typically, the applicant has 180 days from this approval to obtain their building permits. And recognizing the confusion and difficulty may be presented by the situation with ALDOT, ADCNR, and BLM, we're asking the Plan Commission via condition of approval to increase that to 240 days. Give them more time to work through that issue with ALDOT, BLM, et cetera. In terms of conditions of approval, unique to the project, we'll make it very clear that we're memorializing that no drainage improvements are required, as long as no impervious surface is added to the site. In terms of the closeout requirements, which you normally see, the 18.9.7, you normally see that in your standard conditions. We also have another matter, and I think the best way for us to memorialize it here is to include a condition that we, verification of compliance, that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service lighting requirements shall occur when they close out the project. We can, if there's questions on that, I can address it in greater detail. Staff's level of understanding about lighting requirements was not as complete as we thought it was, and that's what, and some of that was, forgive the pun, illuminated on this particular application. So at the time of closeout, we want to verify they have gone through a process. The applicant will have to go through an approval process with Fish and Wildlife, in terms of lighting, in terms of not affecting the sea turtle nesting sites. Number seven, we're memorializing basically the zoning variance. We are being, going a step further, though, in the drawings you see listed there as item A. We want to make absolutely certain that we get another packet of drawings that memorialize the parking spaces and the loading/unloading area is reflected on there. We want to make certain we have that captured in a condition of approval that that occurs. And then finally, a commercial turnout permit or verification from ALDOT, the commercial turnout permit is not required, shall be submitted, because there are two turnouts on a State Route 180, from the two various parcels, you see their pins listed up there. We have to have that before staff will issue the Commission Site Plan approval letter. And that's not an unusual condition of approval that we asked the Planning Commission to consider, but in light of the BLM issues we've mentioned earlier, is why we asked for the greater time to accomplish that. So with that, Commissioners, I am happy to answer questions from staff.
Okay, Mr. King, I have a couple of things. It says that no drainage improvements are required because no impervious surface is added to the site. Are they not adding new building and new paving?
So that's a great question, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman. Let me bring up the overall site plan, so I can answer that a bit more clearly. So this building footprint is not increasing because the addition is overhead, adding a second story.
Okay.
This building right here, its building footprint is not increasing.
Okay.
It's a change of use, and between the two exceeds the 5,000-square-foot requirement, which brings this site plan before you for consideration.
Paving? There's no new paving?
No, sir. They utilize existing.
Okay, then I'm confused, because I see new pavement required on the site plan. So I guess I'm missing where there's, unless that's just an overlay pavement.
Mr. Chairman, we can get the applicant to clarify that. What I can tell you is that you noticed from the photos that went through, we went through the photos that went through, there are several areas of existing impervious surface that may very well be repaired, but not increasing impervious surface. And the applicant can clarify that if I misstated that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Ms. Burnett?
It's page 206. It's the site plan. It shows that there's a variance, two landscape variances for one parcel. But I don't see the parking variance. Does it go to the same parcel, or is it on the other parcel?
So the variance addresses the entire site. So we're using two parcels, but we're having, you're considering, you're considering a site plan on two different parcels.
I understand that, but I think the variance only went to one.
So the variance, so between the two sites, if we were following the zoning ordinance, it would trigger 103 parking spaces between the two. They reduce that to 92.
I'm not being clear. I'm sorry. It looks like the variance is on one parcel and not the other. You have two parcels, one was granted a variance and the other was not.
Can you go back to that slide you were just on, Buford?
Okay, the overall site plan?
No, one more. Oh, okay. I think the prior one, okay, go ahead.
We can look at the...
This one lists the variance regarding the parking, I think.
Okay. So Commissioners, I count, because we have to, and we have to as a part of review process, you know, we have to count these parking spaces one by one, and explicitly count the parking spaces. And so, the number to which it was reduced is what we're looking at here on screen.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm only asking what parcel the variances apply to.
Both parcels.
But it says on 193, it's tied to one, I'm reading it as one parcel. So I'm wondering if we just need to clear it up? You know, get the variances on both parcels?
And Commissioners, I'm gonna try to zoom in on this area. And so this is the actual stat, this is the actual notice of action taken.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry.
So Commissioners, that's a great catch, that's a great catch. Now, you know, I don't like being caught off guard, and I've been, and I am caught off guard here.
I'm sorry.
In terms of the Board of Adjustment, if there is a need to return to that board and ask them to possibly reconsider that, to clarify, because obviously, the number of parking spaces that they're contemplating here is for the entire site. But if we need to do that for legal purposes, we can certainly do that, should we end up with an approval on this, on this, on this site plan.
So just to be clear, the variance is for one tax parcel?
The notice of, I'm sorry, Matthew.
We don't know. You've raised, you've raised a great question, and so we're just gonna have to sort that out afterwards. We're not gonna be able to answer that at this meeting. Because you raised a great question. So I think if you just conditioned approval, if that's the board's desire on us ironing that out, I think that'd be a good solution.
Yep. And we have that from time to time, that the notice of action taken. Sometimes we discover errors, we have to go back and correct.
Sure. Sure.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question, and I think I sent it to you, Buford, but we went back and forth on a lot of things, and this one got, maybe it was lost. I'm not sure what page this was. The slide showing what the different parcels are, oh, page 191.
And Commissioners, you'll have to forgive me. I do, I do not have page, I don't have the page numbers of your document.
This is the zoning classifications, if you scroll up.
We want the...
Higher up, to the right, all the way up to the right. Keep going.
Zoning map.
That one. So there's an overlay of land zoned RSF2 and B2. Was that an error, or can you explain that?
So Commissioners, and Ms. Stradiger is talking about this single parcel right here. So keep in mind, this looks like a subdivision, but it's not really a subdivision. It's an old, recorded survey from many, many years ago, predating subdivisions. And so what I'm going to assume, and again, I didn't do an exhaustive study going back to old dusty paper documents, what we presume is that at some point, a portion of that lot, and I'm gonna call it a lot with air quotes, was sold separately and divided by some means.
So I think her question is, what does the RSF2 mean on that slide? Is that just a typo that's on there somehow?
Oh, you're talking about the text itself?
Yeah.
I added RSF2 because, because when you zoomed in, the text in the map viewer did not show up.
So what parcel there is RSF2?
Both of the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That is some type, that is some type anomaly, that is some type of an anomaly.
That is an error on the map?
Error?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is some type of typo.
Okay. Does not exist.
Yeah, Commissioners, there's nothing like live television. When you get in here, things appear on screen, that do not appear on screen when you're looking at it on your computer.
Okay. And then, my other question was, on the actual drawings, this will be a three-story, two enclosed, and a third open deck?
This is it right here. So, no ma'am, no ma'am, they're adding a second story.
Well, that looks like three.
No, ma'am, those are, those are simply, those are simply dimension lines, those are dimension lines, those are not, those are not floor lines. A lot of architects like to show multiple dimensions, so you can see spacing and features when they produce an elevation drawing.
Okay, maybe we, okay. It looks like the first level is a gift shop, the second level is an oyster bar, the third level is not enclosed, but has a railing and a handrail, where it's just an open deck.
So these are great questions, Commissioners. So what I'll try to call your attention to, and I can zoom in possibly to help you see that a little bit better, you see the dashed line right there? So that is the outline of the, of the previous building beyond. And so, and the Architect of Recorders is here with us today, can explain in greater detail. So what you're seeing here is helping you understand the building beyond and the new improvements shown. So this is only, this is only two floors because they're limited to 35-foot building height. They wouldn't be able to add a third floor. And you see the 35-foot building height right there, that is in compliance with the zoning ordinance. So this would be the finished floor elevation approximately of the new addition right here. This would be its roof. So if you imagine beyond that, and Clay Adams, forgive me for butchering your drawing, this is the existing structure beyond. Imagine these columns built in front of that. This would be the existing structure, this goes on top.
No.
All right, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Adams see if he can clarify that when we call him. Anybody else have any other questions for staff?
I have one question. On the, that same slide, the maximum building height is 35 feet, and according to this drawing, we take the average of the roof. It's not the peak, it's not the crest, the roof, but the average of the roof that meets that 35. So it's the average of the roof.
Yes, except on this case, because you have hips and peaked roofs.
King, any other questions for staff?
Yes. The landscape variance? Why was, go back to that. Why, why are we getting rid of the buffers?
I'm sorry?
What, the landscape buffers?
Correct.
Okay, there was a variance on that, and what was the reason again?
Based upon the, based upon the feedback between, or based upon the correspondence between the applicant and, and Bill Lynn of U.S. Fish and Fish and Wildlife Service, the recommendation was, is that it would be less intrusion into the Alabama beach mouse habitat to not have, to not have landscape buffers. And so therefore, any type of terrain or physical, or physical condition of a piece of property by the zoning ordinance is, is a hardship on the land for which zoning variance is eligible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We have several people signed up. I'm gonna let Clay Adams come on up. See if you can help clarify what we have obviously mixed up somehow.
Yes, sir. My name is Clay Adams with Walcott Adams Burnell Architects, and I'll try to do that and answer any other questions you might have about the architecture or planning, and if other information needs to be addressed, it may be the history of the building or anything, we can ask the owner to speak. Maybe the first one with the architecture, so the ground floor exists and it has a sloped roof on it, and rather than tear that roof off, we're gonna put our second floor a little higher than normal. Most time, you would stack it right on the first floor.
Clay, if you could speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. So we're putting it on top of the roof that exists, so it moved up a little bit higher, but still less than the three stories, so there's actually a void in there. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the third floor, will that be enclosed?
And it's only the second. It's the first and the second, just a little bit higher.
Okay, so the second floor, will that be enclosed?
No, it has a roof on it and a rail.
So it's completely open?
Right.
Lighting and noise is not contained?
No, it's completely open, yes. And the lighting, though, is up under the beams in the ceilings, you know, to conceal that. They're not hanging off the side. We show some lighting down low, but that lighting, like on most people's porches or those big residences on the water that have light that may be shining out of windows, ours will be up in that ceiling, not hanging below the beam level, you know, to try to help with all that, right? And then I think Buford did a good job of explaining a fairly complicated condition, but really, all of our buildings exist, all of the paving exists, and all of the sand buffers exist in place. We would have loved to put some landscaping and help between neighbors and things, but thorough discussions with the county and Bill Lynn said that since we're not disturbing anything, we also don't want you to disturb that, either in building or paving and/or affecting the beach mouse. Was there another question?
Just back to that paving, so the paving that I see on it, it says new paving, is just overlay?
I'm sorry, it was a repair on the edge of that. It's a little piece, and the big apron exists, and the parking lot everywhere. Bill Lynn met with us and the owner many times, and it is defined, we cannot do anything outside of that, but there's a little piece that needs repair on the northwest corner.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Adams?
Are you gonna do anything to prevent the alternate path to get out of the parking lot? If you look on the aerial, you can see people are using from parking lot to the other road, an alternate path to get out.
Explain that. In the BLM property, maybe?
Yes, you see the path? I know you got the variance to do away with the landscape buffer, but people are driving on the sand to get out. And I know that for a fact, because I went in there and the parking lot was full, and I had to back all the way out Fort Morgan Road to get out and then use the sand, because traffic was too bad to back into Fort Morgan Road.
I think BLM, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, on the, you know, both of those aprons exist, that's why we're wondering why ALDOT needs a turnout, they're both already there. But they, they've asked us to put a piling and rope thing in place to stop that, I think, because that is their property. So we quickly put that on a drawing to BLM, and of course, that's where it's currently in limbo of three organizations, levels of bureaucracy speaking with each other.
Right.
Yes.
It just could be a dangerous situation.
Yes, and I think maybe that's why they said that, is to, let's get that stopped, right? And we'd be open to anything. Of course, they're telling us specifically what we can do on their property. Yes.
I have a question about parking. I don't see, I know we reduced quantity from, what, 102 to 93?
Yes, sir.
We do not, I mean, I can get up to about 50 spots on what I'm, what we're seeing in our packet, but is there a parking layout?
There's a number on each one. Buford can show you back to this L1, I think. See all the little numbers in circles, like there's 7, 8, 8, 8, keep going around the back and over to the west. See all those numbers, 7, 7, 3, 4, 5, 2, 9? All add up to the 90-something.
Okay, I see them now, thank you.
That's okay, yeah, it's a complicated.
I see them on the left hand side.
It's a complicated project, it's very simple in that we're developing, it already has a restaurant, gift shop, and a grocery store, and we're just reconfiguring those same pieces, it's just on a complex site.
Any other questions? Thank you sir.
And if I can answer anybody.
Okay. Julie Brown?
Hi, I'm Julie Brown, we own a property adjacent to Sassy Bass, and our main concern was more noise, more light, and more people. We already have people trespassing, walking right by our house to get to the property, that are in houses along the Gulf, and now hearing that that second story is not enclosed, that makes me even more worried about the noise situation. I know it's the lights are gonna be up in the rafters, and I know the amber lights have to be out for the turtles, but not having even walls now to contain the noise, because it's gonna be almost eye level with our first deck, and so, I know that, you know, not having landscape buffer, I understand that with the beach mouse, but now sound, there's just no buffer, there's nothing to filter the light and the sound through the no walls now. So, that is my big concern. I was hoping, I've emailed and talked to Mark, and I was hoping to get either memorialized, or maybe we could agree on trying to get a restrictive covenant, because we've talked, and he has, you know, a laid-back, low-key plan for this, so, you know, said it's not gonna be Tacky Jacks or the Hangout, but we are worried about a future owner, and if a future owner comes in and tries to, you know, have karaoke till, you know, 11:45 or whatever, then we've got a problem, because we are really close to this restaurant, and you know, now with no walls, sound's gonna carry even further. And so, I would like to at least memorialize some sort of closing time for the second level, so that you can keep, you know, the quiet peace that we have, you know, I mean, it is surrounded, as you can see, well, you can't really see from this, but there's houses in close proximity all the way around that property, and we're pro-business, I mean, we enjoy going over there, but I'm really worried with that second story, that it's gonna just bring more noise and people and light, and that's gonna disrupt the whole area. We've got already, you know, neighbors have been vandalized, there's people tromping through other people's property to try to get over there, so I've also asked that he could put a beach mouse-approved sand fence all the way around his property, to at least deter people, I mean, you know, it's not gonna deter some drunk person from clamoring over, but at least deter people from walking through, or cutting through, and maybe putting no trespassing signs up, because, I mean, it's private property all the way around, and like I said, he's been a good neighbor so far, but we're just really concerned about what the future holds, and a future owner, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Devin Moore?
Commissioner, I am legal counsel for the developer.
Please come to the microphone.
You'll have to come up to the mic, because...
I don't have anything to say unless you have some questions regarding the BLM-ALDOT issue, I know it's, we've gone late already, I have no desire to keep you people any longer, so I'm not gonna stand up here and hail forth regarding a dispute between the federal government and the state, unless you have some questions that you would like to ask.
Any questions? All right, thank you sir.
Since I did walk all the way up here, however, I'm gonna retract what I just said. Mr. King and Matt have been delightful, they've been delightful to deal with, and they've done a great job of presenting what is a complicated situation to the commission. I will say, there is no chance this issue is resolved, I mean, going from six months to eight months, we'll take what we can get, but this issue is gonna be litigated, likely in federal court in Mobile, it's not gonna be resolved in eight months. And I just mentioned that, because if you have the option of making it 18 months or 24 months, that would be better, otherwise, if we can come back here in eight months and ask for an extension, I guess that's all right as well.
Okay, we'll consider that.
Thank you.
Okay, Greg Stradiger?
I'm Greg Stradiger, I'm gonna not reiterate what Julie said, but the noise and the lighting's gonna be an issue. Right now, if you go stand in the beach in front of Sassy Bass, you can see the parking lot lights, so I wanna make sure those are included in the turtle friend lighting, they need to be lowered and shielded. The open floor plan, you're gonna see those lights from the beach, because it's up on a hill, and I'm probably gonna see it from our house, which is about a half a mile away, and the noise does travel at an elevated, when you're up high, the noise is gonna travel, and if they bring music in there, I'm gonna be listening to Jimmy Buffett cover band on my deck, and I don't really want to. I do love the Sassy Bass, I eat there all the time, the grocery store is great, but we gotta make sure that we don't benefit a commercial entity over the residents that live around it, there's gotta be a happy place we can find. I don't understand why a flat roof needs a nine-foot buffer, it's just elevating that light higher, and making it more of a beacon, and the sound to travel farther, maybe that's something we can do, and enclosing the space would be fabulous. That's it, thank y'all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did we do Planning Commission disclosures? No, 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 you're fine, you're fine, does Planning Commission or disclosures at the beginning of this public hearing?
Yes.
And did you mention, okay, okay, I just, I'm sorry, I missed that, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was in the record.
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Joe Emerson?
Good evening Commissioner, Joe Emerson for the Fort Morgan Civic Association. I'd specifically like to bring up the fact that we're looking at these suggestions from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and see if these can't be applied for every new build that requires an incidental take permit in Fort Morgan. As you know, we have beach mouse habitat, as well as Alabama, or excuse me, the sea turtle habitat, and why not just go ahead and implement this into the local provisions? I mean, this is an issue that we've had for years, and if we're gonna apply it to this build, why not all builds?
Okay.
And then, as an individual, I'd like to say, if there's anything you guys can do to just push this issue with the BLM and the state, that man's tied up in litigation that he's got nothing to do with, so, that's my comments.
All right, thank you. That's all I had signed up, was there anybody else that wished to speak to this item that did not sign up? Okay. Mr. King, do you have anything to add or comment on?
And Chairman, thank you for letting me speak one more time, I'll be super brief. I mentioned earlier about staff's level of understanding about lighting requirements in U.S. Fish and Wildlife, what I'll say here in super brief, our level of understanding was basically that their requirements are applicable from the coastal control line south, which is basically the 10-foot contour south, and this is the good thing about this process, is that sometimes, information you're not aware of comes to light. Our level of understanding now, based upon discussion with Fish and Wildlife, and I wanted to state this verbally, which is why I'm addressing the commission again, is that their authority applies in this entire area, and so, any type of structure that is placing lighting, that is adding lighting, must go through that approval process with Fish and Wildlife, that is our current level of understanding, which can include, among other things, limiting, it was mentioned earlier about the light poles, light towers, and the parking lot. In this, in the zoning ordinance, they're limited to 25 feet tall, Fish and Wildlife can limit those to 12 feet tall, and with special cutoff design shields, among other things. Not only that, they can also regulate, our level of understanding, they can require that instead of bright white LEDs, they're amber-colored LEDs, among many other things. And all of that would work its way through, should this be approved, we'd have that all verified at the time of closeout.
Okay. So just, a question on this Buford, if this whole issue with the BLM and getting the appropriate permits and all the matters resolved about access to the property, you know, if it takes 18 to 24 months, is that meaning that this approval is contingent upon that, and they could not start construction until that issue is resolved?
So Commissioners, what we, all we need, all we need at the county level, is we need a turnout permit from ALDOT, or something from ALDOT that says they don't need a turnout permit, that's what we need to satisfy the zoning ordinance, and unfortunately, you have some federal and state agencies that have gotta sort that out. That being said, Mr. Chairman, you heard a request to possibly, if this is approved, grant a longer time, and at staff level, I will tell you, we certainly honor the Planning Commission's discretion here, I was being a bit conservative by increasing from 180 days to 240 days, we certainly respect this situation and respect the Planning Commission, they wanted to grant a longer time.
If they need more, they can ask for more at a later date?
I don't see why not Commissioner, it would be, I don't see why not, that we couldn't come back as an old business item and readdress that, the commission's site plan process is so new, we haven't had to deal with that just yet, but I don't see why not.
Is there a preference on staff's part, which way we would go with that, whether you would rather keep it to the 240, let them come back and ask for more time if they needed, or go ahead and give it to them now?
Standing here behind the podium, I'd like to stick with the 240 days, and then we could always come back and readdress this as an old business item.
Okay. One option, just confirming with legal counsel real quickly, is that we approve it for 240 days, and with a note that it would, that timeframe would stay if litigation was filed until that litigation is resolved, and then the clock would continue ticking after that litigation is resolved through the appellate process.
Because it appears if you grant it, that it's granted, you know, with the condition that they've got that issue resolved, and so if that becomes litigation, then they can't move forward with the application as they filed it with us, and so, instead of having to keep coming back and coming back for 30 days, 60 days, 80 days, or whatever, it could stay, that if litigation was filed, guarded, those two governmental entities, that it stayed, so the clock doesn't keep ticking.
Right.
Yeah, and thank you, thank you Ms. Fleming, I like that even better.
All right, so I don't wanna ignore the other issues, the other two issues that I seem to be hearing are noise and lights. We have another item on the agenda tonight, which seems to be a common problem with wedding venues over noise, so is this a viable issue that we need to address on this item?
And what I would say to Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is that, this is where, now we're back into compatibility, this is where you have broad authority on zoning site plans, that is a compatibility issue you can consider.
Have they offered a timeframe for the hours of the restaurant? We do that, again, on wedding venues, they have a, you know, and I don't know if they're open till midnight, they're open till 10, open, do we know? Do I need to get Mr. Adams?
I don't have any information related to that, Mr. Chairman, and I might ask our legal counsel to jump in here, if that's something that this Planning Commission can consider restricting, but that may be, you may wanna invite the applicant back to the podium just to clarify that.
Well, I guess I'm gonna look at my Planning Commission members to see, I'm the only one speaking on it, I'd rather hear if there are others that have an issue with it, if you don't, then we move on, but...
No, I'd like to hear. Can the applicant, either Clay or the owner, come up and speak to the hours of operation?
Clay, do you wanna speak to this, or you, can you speak?
Thank you, Mr. Froelich's coming to the podium.
Being that this seems to be somewhat of an issue, is there something on your end that you can address that will minimize that, or you just, what are your hours?
Sir, I could talk about that, we're a family restaurant, we're not trying to be a honky-tonk, we never were, we haven't been for 11 years. The people, what we find when they come to the beach, they go to the beach, they get tired to come to dinner, as soon as they can get fed and go home, they're done, so, Ms. Brown even said today, you know, by 9:30, it's usually dark over there, so we're peaceful and we're quiet, she said that earlier today to me, so, in 4th of July weekend, yeah, we're there till 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, but I don't understand how we could have a business and grow the business, and then be required to have limited time hours, you know, that's like, be a real handicap for us to have to shut down.
I don't know if there's so much limiting time, other than because it's an open-air event, that, a business that now extends your business out into the public, so, one of the ways to control that is through hours.
There are noise ordinances, you know, certain times.
No, but we have the discretion, we have the discretion to add that because of the site plan process.
I understand.
And because we, and again, not pick on you, we have another item on the agenda tonight that's dealing strictly with the noise issue, so, this is not uncommon. Because of the tight business, if we were enclosed, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion right now, but I think because it's open, that seems to be raising some questions about how should we control that, and then...
I got you.
And I didn't know what your hours, your hours may would have answered that question.
We don't have closing hours, we just have opening hours, and then when the last guest goes home, we close, so, in the off-season, we're usually out there at 8:30, and during season, we're out there about 10:30, or the last guest usually leaves 10:30 or 11, but it's, you know...
And I don't know that I got it, but what was your name, please?
Mark Froelich.
You know, one option, Mr. Chairman, would be to table this item, and it'd be good to see what the owner's position is on this, and let them come back with a proposal for this issue, since it does look like there's some time ahead for them anyways to resolve some ancillary legal questions.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
In the design of the second story, is there a space for live music?
There's no stage, there's no, you know, we don't have plans for that, basically, it's a sunset bar for people to go up and sit and see the sunset, and have hors d'oeuvres and appetizers and drinks, and...
So if we asked you not to have live music on the second story, that wouldn't be a problem?
It's not a problem for me, but you know, of course, it's gonna, if I were to try to sell the business, maybe it's a problem for the new owners, and maybe it is an issue, so, maybe shutters or something where it would be enclosed, would be a better solution, I mean, I haven't had a second to even think about this, the options, so maybe, what Matt suggests is we table it and come back to it, we come up with another solution, or some shutters, or close down shutters at 9 o'clock, or something like that, so, I hate to ruin the atmosphere for everybody, if we can, you know, maybe at 9 o'clock, the shutters come down, or can we think about, I mean, I'm caught off-guard here, but I'm just trying to, I've been working on this project for seven years and one month, and it's, I've been dealing with nine government agencies, so, it's been a long journey.
Mr. Froelich, I believe you that I think it's not gonna be a problem under your ownership, but at this point, if we're approving an expansion of this property, and it's contingent on what we approve, whether it's today or if we table it in 30 days, that's something that the new owner would also have to agree to, is that right, Matthew?
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you sir. All right, Matthew, anything else from your side?
No sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments from Planning Commission members? Then I would entertain a motion and ask that you carefully frame your motion to include staff conditions, and go with the 240 days unless you wanna do otherwise, I think we talked about adding, verifying the variance issue, so you wanna be sure and include that, and then, or if you wanna table, so it's, those are your options, so I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we table this issue until we have a clear set of options that may come about, at least until the next meeting, and perhaps two meetings from now.
Can we just go for the June meeting, because it looks like the next meeting's gonna be a packed agenda?
Yeah.
With what's already been tabled.
That's why I said perhaps two.
So let's maybe just put it...
Till the June meeting.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Buford's made a motion to table, I have a second.
Second.
Ms. Burnett's second the motion, any question or comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I defer a hundred percent to you, but maybe out of respect for the Planning Commission, I don't know if they need a quick five-minute break, but just want to bring that up. Getting some nods, that would be great.
Is there any for? Yes? Okay, I hear yes. All right, well, five minutes.
We'll move it quickly, though.
Yeah.
Which one's yours, Cory? Oh, that's right.
The building was constructed in 1985, so the addition should not affect the value of the neighboring property. And staff recommends approval of these two additions with the following conditions: to obtain a turnout permit and to approve the stormwater management plan from the Baldwin County Highway Department, which is currently in progress. And then memorialize the closeout requirements of Section 18.9.7. Requirements as a prerequisite to obtaining a certificate of occupancy for the building. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Just out of curiosity, what's on that communications tower, do you know? In terms of what kind of communications?
See, I believe it's not cellular communications.
It looks like it's been there for...
It's been there since the mid-eighties.
And we do have a representative of the owner who would be better suited to answer that.
Any other questions? Okay, I have Calvin Sasser sign up to speak.
Thank you all. Here for the applicant as well as the owner. To answer your question, it's my understanding that was like a localized network for radio communication when power lines are down, cellphone towers are down, for the mostly staff-only, I'm sure, emergency situations where other local utilities or whatever could utilize it as well.
So it is from, it's communication for the utilities?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions for owner's representative?
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. No questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. Entertained motion.
Move its approval.
Mr. Brewer has made the motion to approve.
With the conditions, yes.
Second? Mr. Davis seconded the motion. Any question or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item, case number CSP 23-5, Bay Shore Christian School. Does anybody need to clear any prior communications on this item? Okay, Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Chairman, Commissioners, we have a Bay Shore Christian School before you, the Commission Site Plan. Unlike the public schools, this being a private school, we apply and they go through the Commission Site Plan process. And so you'll see the locator map right there. And here's an overall site plan. You'll see several site plans through here. This is the overall site plan of their initial development. Offscreen is the connector to County Road 13 that we have called out here. And also, Chairman, the waste container, and it is screened, I promise. Commissioners, as you see here in our use table, a school, public or private, in this case, we do have authority to review this one, triggers a Commission Site Plan here. Even though it's a permitted use, building is greater than 5,000 square feet, 28,000 square feet, which triggers this Commission Site Plan. So, single-use building, does not trigger traffic study, drainage is adequate. We're here to tell you that it meets zoning and local provisions. This is not affecting an alley road, so that's not applicable. They have their MPDES for AIDM. The landscape buffers, we will show you. No wetland filling and that sort of thing, so Corps of Engineers is not involved. Turnout permit from Baldwin County Highway Department is in your packet, we'll show that shortly. Here is its location, here is its location in Planning District 15, on the west side of County Road 13. Have an aerial image of the site. And so what you're considering today are actually, what you're considering today, you're actually considering two parcels. This is the parcel on which the development activity occurs. This right here is for information, so you realize this is along near a parcel that's used for access to the site. As we call out right there with the call-out balloon, and then you see the primary property where the school campus will go. Here's your zoning map. Now, this is a combination of Baldwin County zoning, the purple areas, and we're calling out the school property, as you see, and the connector. The purple areas are in the city of Daphne. And so here we have for you, as you see many times, the basic site information. Planning District 15 does have a local provision regarding placing utilities underground, which they're complying with. As we mentioned, a traffic study is not being triggered. They do have the commercial turnout permit, which you will see. We'll also show you where the 20-foot wide, 25-foot wide landscape buffers are required, this type of use and this type of zoning. As we saw, there's no, as we might have mentioned previously, there are no jurisdictional wetlands on the site. So Commissioners, I'll ask everyone to just follow the arrow, so we can show the photos of the adjacent property. And so if you'll just follow the arrow. And now here, you're looking at the entrance, you'll see they went ahead and obtained their commercial turnout permit and have gone ahead and made that turnout onto County Road 13. And here's the north adjacent property looking west. Also, here's another property to the north, this is looking from Friendship Road. And Commissioners, what we did here is we made certain, we put two site plan signs, because it does have multiple frontages. And then here, looking, turning and looking toward the southeast, the property to the south. Here are your building elevations of the initial school building. And so the east elevation, which would be with the cupola or rotunda, probably a cupola architectural feature, that actually faces County Road 13. Here's a floor plan. This is the commercial turnout permit provided by Baldwin County Highway Department, we talked about earlier. Here, we're going to launch into the landscape plans. A couple things, what you'll notice in that, this is the site plan that you're considering to approve. So you notice there are preserved trees in the entranceway that we zoomed in there. The existing vegetation to remain, you'll see, is in that olive-green color. And so there's no landscape buffers, per se, on that access road, as you see. And then the 25-foot landscape buffers that are adjacent to RA zoning, they are in place on your drawing right here, as you see again, your 25-foot landscape buffer. And then what you see is, the way the matchline works, we're just calling out, showing you the, where the building falls on this particular one. Now, this landscape buffer right here is above and beyond the requirements of the zoning ordinance, but they're proposing it, so we're going to memorialize that they do furnish it. Plant schedule here, just color coding, the different, the color coding for you, the different overstory and understory trees and shrubs that will go in landscape buffer, as you see right there. And as we like to do, we, where we do have sample, sample images, we show them for the different plantings. Now, the yellow areas that you see here, those are the loading and unloading zones that they are going to use. We're going to have a condition of approval that deals with those, because they're utilizing widened sidewalks to accomplish that, which will work fine, but we'll have a condition of approval, because we make certain that those do not have, are not obstructed in the future. Here, we're just explaining here, as we typically do, what the requirements of RA zoning. A school of this facility obviously is available in RA zoning, as you see right there, marked in yellow. The wetland delineation for your staff report. And so, as you need us, they noted that it's composed entirely of uplands. Now, a site like this, one, a very good question here would be, what about multiple accesses for fire protection? So the applicant, they did some vetting with Belle Forest Volunteer Fire Department. We're going to memorialize in an approval that at this stage of development, they don't need a secondary entrance. As the site develops in the future, it could very well require a secondary entrance. The city of Daphne, we're required to let the nearby city have comment if they wish they did not have any comments. There's the comment right there from the Belle Forest Fire Chief, Volunteer Fire Department Chief, about a secondary entrance. For, for your staff report purposes, we have your MPDES, copy of the PE stamped drainage report, and then also, there's no violation of covenants or restrictions, our typical things you see on a Commission Site Plan. Here we have your water, so the water provider would be Belle Forest Water, Baldwin County Sewer would be the sanitary sewer provider. Local provisions of Planning District 15, other than the underground utilities, there aren't any other local provisions that would be featured on this site. And Commissioners, here, from a compatibility standpoint, basically, you know, a, a school facility is available use within RA zoning. And what we're basically asserting here, from a compatibility standpoint, is that certainly educational facilities are contributing uses to a growing area, especially one that's going from that transect conversion from a rural to a more suburban, to a, to a more suburban land use type. And this is the second page of that area. So first, first slide here, Commissioners, are your standard conditions, as you see many times on a Commission Site Plan, in terms of unique to the project? Number nine is memorializing the information we talked about, in terms of the secondary entrance and the desires of the Volunteer Fire Department. The landscape buffer that's along Friendship Road, we're memorializing here that since it's being shown on the site plan, that this site plan approval will require it to be furnished. Also, a bit of a procedural thing, there is a common lot line movement that is necessary between two of the parcels, to put this project fully on one parcel. And the applicant is well aware of it, and they will accomplish it. We want to make certain that's accomplished before we issue CSP approval letter. And then, what we're doing with item 12 is, the desire is, and we can go back to that slide if there's questions, leaving a gap in the landscape buffer, contemplating future expansion of the site. What we're memorializing here, if they sell that property, or for some reason that the site does not get expanded, that the expectation is, is we reserve the right to, in the future, require that the landscape buffer is constructed. But it's understandable to delete it at this point, contemplating that they expect to develop the site for, to do further site development in future years. And then 13 is basically the 12-foot wide by 50-foot wide, loading and unloading spaces, making certain those are not obstructed by other building features or site features. Because those are a requirement of the zoning ordinance, a building this size, a building this size needs those unloading areas, making certain they don't get obstructed by future, by future site features. With that, Commissioners, I am happy to answer questions from staff.
Okay, any questions for staff?
The only question that I have here has to do with that loading and unloading zone. What grade level is this school proposed to be?
Commissioners, I believe it is K through 12, but I will let the applicant clarify at what point which grades will be offered on this side in this building, because they do have an existing campus on Reno Road.
Yeah. The reason I ask that is because on rainy days, if that's an uncovered drop-off area, there are going to be a lot of kids running for the door, or a lot of parents running with them with an umbrella. Which, I'm just curious, is, is there some way that, under the regulations, it would be possible to turn that around to where there would be a covered drop-off for children?
That would be up to the applicant to address, if they wish to tinker with the site, to contemplate that. What we're contemplating here, and certainly, again, this is a site plan approval, and you certainly have very broad authority, what we're making certain here is that the basic components of the zoning ordinance are complied, have compliance. And so the three yellow areas you see right there do accomplish what's required by the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
How many parcels is this? Is it two or three?
It is. So, let me give you a better drawing, and let me go back. So the school owns this parcel, this parcel. This parcel is what you're considering tonight for development purposes. They also own this parcel, and this parcel, and this parcel. Based upon some of the information we received during the review process, future plans would expand other facilities here, and the applicant can go into greater detail about what those future plans would, might be, possibly some athletic facilities and so forth.
Well, their access parcel is part of what we're looking at as well. So that's two parcels we're looking at?
You are looking strictly, in terms of your Commission Site Plan, this parcel right here.
Well, the access is necessary, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. I would really like to see that one parcel.
What, what do you mean when you say, see that one parcel? Can you just explain that a little more?
It's, it's two parcels. See right there? Up there? See, to, off of 13 is one parcel, that's the drive. And you can't have the back parcel without the first parcel, because they're not allowing access on that other road.
I see, you're saying you'd like to see them combine those two parcels?
Yes.
That'd be, we'll see what the applicant has to say about that. It's a great question.
Okay.
Because, Plain Commissioners, obviously, when you have common ownership, a common lot line movement can also be a common lot line removal.
Yeah, works.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, we had no one sign up, but the applicant's representative is here to speak to it. You might want to come on up.
Can I just clarify?
And give us your name.
My name's Steve Delahuntie, Sawgrass Consulting, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Bay Shore Christian. Okay. Mr., Mr. Booker, is that right? Mr. Bower? It is seven through 12. It's the, that's the grades that this school will house. And it is a private institution. I think they have the flexibility of whether or not they have a covered access or not, but, you know, I'm sure that'd be considered if they have a problem in the future.
Well, that, that would be, that, that raises one other question, but, but, yeah, I mean, it just, it would seem to make sense that you would have a covered access somewhere in the building, even if it's a, if it's a handicap situation. The other question is, if it's seven through 12 in this part of the school, where, do you allow student parking, or do they allow student parking? And if so, where is that student parking?
The student parking would be dedicated on the, there's, there's one portion that's been dedicated on the, the south parcel line, and also on the north parcel line.
Oh, okay. I beg your pardon, I didn't see that on that particular map. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I'm familiar with the area, having worked on Friendship Road for years, has there been any discussion with the county or the city to make a, it seems like we lost the opportunity in working with this school to have a connector road between 13 and Friendship?
Yes, sir.
So, is there, has there been discussion, and, and our representative from the engineering department, do we, has the county worked with Daphne with some type of location for a connector road? Is it north of this, close to this?
Yes, sir. Actually, during the preliminary process, we were, and we did do a traffic study. Stain and Associates came down at the direction of the Baldwin County Highway Department, and we did an intensive traffic study for Cordy, and from 181, Cordy, and all the way to the roundabout at 64. And it was recommended that we do a southbound right-turn lane improvement. It also recognized there was a failing, an existing failing intersection at Cordy and 13. And so there is discussion between the Highway Department and the city of Daphne for improvements.
Okay. You got anything to add to that?
Yeah, we do have an active project of possibly putting a roundabout there at that Cordy and 13 intersection, and continuing Cordy all the way to Friendship Road. It's kind of a project with the school board.
Okay.
It's kind of, it's kind of pushing that, not just for this school, but a thorough prayer for the Carroll School on Main Street.
Is it just a matter of cost, the reason the school didn't want to go ahead and extend over, I know it would be private access?
For us?
To Friendship, yes.
Uh...
Apparently y'all have talked with Belle Forest.
That's correct. The, the orientation and the purchase of the property, or the dedication of the property, was strictly, you know, that made a, they already had, they owned that parcel for a long, long time. If you notice, there's an existing small building out front, and I think through acquisition over time. And their desire was to promote an access through 13, since that was the growing portion of Belle Forest and Daphne.
Steve, y'all have obviously contemplated the future buildings here, you know, the additional wings and doors, this and that, the new building kind of in the central part. Where are you anticipating that future access, secondary access to be? Is it on Friendship?
It would be, there is a, it would be on Friendship, and there is an existing utility easement on that north boundary line.
I see, okay.
That's right, that Belle Forest had negotiated with the school, and we granted it them with the condition of, we could actually encroach upon it, if necessary, on that north boundary line connecting to Friendship.
And I had one other question. Buford, can you bring up the landscape plan? I just was curious, I could not find a drawing where it was labeled what it actually was. In that area, we were just talking about where that, that drive continues east-west, there's that small block, looks like it's at the end of a concrete apron or something. What is that square?
Where's that?
I believe that's a sewer lift station, Steve.
That is, that is a lift, that's a pump station. That, that will route out to 13, and go north on Cordy, I mean, to Cordy and then all the way to 11.
Okay. I just, I couldn't find a drawing where that was labeled, I was curious what that was.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, had no one else signed up? Is there someone that failed to sign up that wished to speak to this? All right, I will close the public hearing. Mr. King, you have anything else to add?
No, sir, that's, that's enough already.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve this request.
Subject to all these conditions?
Yes, subject to the conditions.
All right, Mr. Brewer has made the motion to approve, subject to conditions. Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Malika's seconded the motion. Any question or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item is case number CSP 23-10, the Pittman Property. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Ms. Boykin?
All right. This is a request for a Commission Site Plan approval. The subject property is located in Planning District 15, and is zoned M1. It's just south of Milton Jones Road. The applicant owns a Pittman tractor, which is what's on the subject property, and would like to add a 50 by 50 addition to the west side of the building. As you can see on the zoning map, to the south and west, it's also zoned industrial. To the north is B3, and to the east is RSF1, single-family. Here's what the current property has on it. Here's some of the adjacent properties. This is the site plan that was submitted. You see on the right, in blue, outlined in blue is the existing building. The proposed addition is in red. This is the applicant's project narrative, drainage narrative, and BMP plan, which was stamped by an engineer. Here is a parking plan. The parking plan includes 24 nine-by-19 parking spaces, and one loading and unloading space. The loading and unloading is highlighted in purple, and then you see the parking spaces highlighted in yellow. This is the front elevation and the floor plan, the new 50 by 50 addition. Half of it is an open bay, the other half is a shop with parts and restroom and a service Since the, since this is zoned industrial and the applicant is adjacent to a residential property, there is a 75-foot landscape buffer required. There is existing vegetation that the applicant is planning on keeping. There's one area, if you look on the right, in, in the highlighted circle, that is kind of open, the applicant is planning to put more trees in this area to fill in on. We had no comments from other agencies. And they are asking for a Commission Site Plan approval, because they're within 200 feet of a residential property. Staff sees, they, they met all the zoning requirements. We do not require architectural or engineering plans to be submitted. They will have to submit as-built at their final, at their final inspection. So staff has recommended approval with the two typical conditions put upon it. They have to memorialize within the approval recommendation that the closeout requirements of Section 18.9.7 of the zoning ordinance are required and are a prerequisite to obtaining their CO. And then also the typical 100 and day, 180-day before they have to get their building permit.
I'll just be the first to say it. Maybe the only one will say it. If, if we do not require engineered plans, or at least a scale drawing, and, and we had another application like this, then I would, I would move in the next meeting that we have to add that to. I, I just think this is a terrible middle for us to have to make a decision from. You can't tell if things are scaled properly, you can't tell if there's, if the spacing between parking spaces is appropriate, you know, if there's 24 feet, it's just, it's just written, it's not really drawn to a scale where we can really tell that it, that's just my opinion about it, I don't know how everybody else feels, I just...
I'll concur.
I would agree. This loading and unloading, Doc, there's no drive to it. I'm, I'm confused.
The applicant also owns the adjacent parcel to the west and south.
I'm sorry?
The applicant owns the adjacent parcel to the south and west, so they use the access from the west side, so...
Any other questions for staff or comments, before I...
I do have a question. For this type of application, we, we don't require engineered plans?
No, ma'am.
No?
Uh-uh.
To be clear, we require an engineered drainage study.
Right.
And that's the only engineering document that's required.
Okay.
Now, when they submit the building plans to the building department, those will have to be signed and sealed by an engineer with the building permit application.
With just the building?
For just the building, that's correct.
Not parking?
No.
No.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I have Lee Pittman signed up to speak.
Appreciate y'all hearing in the case. Thank you for the staff for their approval. Obviously, we appreciate yours. I will apologize for the presentation, I did that myself. I'm not an artist, but I do have drawn, drawn plans from Kimco for the metal building. They did do the original building, and I will submit those when we do the plan. There's some difficulty getting people to do some of the engineering requesting, so I did the best I could to try to get the timeline. The business has been there since 2000, it's, we're adding an addition to the west side of the building, and operating, but there are three entrances off of the road that runs north and south, and that proposed loading/unloading area is in front of one of the entrances. So I'll be happy to answer any, any questions. Again, apologize for my rudimentary drawings, but in attempt to comply with the requirements of the Commission Plan, I did the best that I could do as a layman.
And don't leave yet, but just, so I understand, so once the project's completed, they have to submit as-built, those have to be to scale? In other words...
That is a great question, because we've never been asked that before, and this will be the first time we've been presented with this specific scenario. I have to pull up the...
Ashley says they have to be engineered.
So the gamble you take, if we were to approve this, is that you go out and build from this, and then he, then once you then have to get, obviously, as-built prepared for it to be approved for the county, if you had anything off, because we certainly can't tell from looking at this, then it won't get approved.
Understand.
That's, that's the risk I hear. It's just, to me, it works far better to have those plans up front, so that what we're approving is, we know what you're building, to wait till you get finished to find out if you did it right, seems backwards to me, but that's just me. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
On the parking plan here, are any of these parking spaces existing? The seven, the five, the 10?
The seven spaces... The seven spaces are, uh, existing. Uh, the ten spaces we use to park equipment, you know, currently, but we're going to take that and use that for, for automobiles. We're not increasing the number of people that we have working for us. We're actually, this is a parts department to help better, better supply our customers with, uh, with parts, and we have a part salesman that's working in close proximity with the sales office, and we're going to put an office for him out there. Uh, the five spaces will be added, uh, and the ten spaces, and both of those will be dedicated. And again, we have a meeting of the minds here, hopefully, I mean, understand what it's drawn to. We've stated what we're going to do, and we will do what we say we're going to do, and if we don't, then obviously y'all would, uh, not give us our, uh, stupid occupancy.
Since, since this is a parts, um, if this is an addition for, you know, a part supply, will there be any sort of truck access? Will trucks need to back up to a loading and unloading bay?
We already have a loading bay, and we have, you know, a parking lot adjacent to us in the park. The trucks, we already get deliveries every day.
Okay, so the deliveries will occur in the same place?
Yeah, we've been doing, operating for twenty, over twenty years in this location.
Okay.
And we have several trucks delivering and picking up every day from the freight companies and common carriers, and equipment and deliveries of, you know, heavy machinery.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. At the beginning, did you say the ten spaces were being used as something else currently?
No, it's just, it's just, it's just land adjacent to the gate.
Okay, I thought you said.
And based on the square footage and all that, to make sure we meet the, you know, make, make people understand that we'll have adequate space for the vehicles, and we dedicated those spaces for automobiles, and they'll be, if we, you know, we'll put the lines there at the right distances and spaces to, um, get the drawings that we can, that we need, you know, when we get completed, to get the final approval.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have a question. Your parcel, it looks like it's offset just a little bit from the larger parcel, but there's no road there. Is there a road there?
Talking about on the west side of the parcel?
Yes.
Yeah, there is.
Where the loading and unloading dock would be?
Correct. If you, if you look through, and I bet picture, that, that road is asphalted. Milton Jones Road doesn't even appear to be asphalted in that site map there, but it's been paved for, for twenty years, and the road that we have running north and south off of Milton Jones is paved beyond the end of the subject property.
It just doesn't look like right of way on this map, the north and south.
It's not right of way. I own, I own the property.
So it's not a street?
It's not a street, no. It's not a public street, no.
It's a drive.
It's a.
An improved drive?
An improved drive, yes, ma'am. It's been used for, you know, twenty years by not only my business, but the business to the, uh, to the west.
Is it on your property or adjacent property?
All of it's on my property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Doesn't.
It's not on this property.
That's all I had signed up. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak to this item that didn't sign up? Okay. Ms. Boykin, you have anything else you need to add?
I do not.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and, uh, any discussion, any comments?
I just want to, I don't think I asked the right question.
Okay.
I don't think the drive is on this parcel.
It's on the parcel, the adjacent parcel that he owns.
Right. So, the loading and the, the drive to do the loading and the unloading is not on this parcel. Is that correct?
The, the road that's west of this site that accesses his, uh, I believe that Mr. Pittman also owns the other parcel, has three driveways off of it that, that access the subject property.
Correct. You can, you can see those. There's the one in the front, and there's the one in the middle, and then there's, there's three actual drives off of that road that enter the subject property.
Selena, bring up the parking plan. I think, I think that slide has the illustration that we're looking for.
Yeah, this can't, it's.
Because if you look at that green boundary, that's the parcel boundary.
Yeah.
And then the loading-unloading occurs on this parcel.
Yeah, and there, you can't see it, but that's a, I mean, that's a twenty-foot paved road that goes all the way through there.
But it's really not a paved road. It, it's, it's, for you to conduct your business on this parcel, you have to get outside this parcel. You own the land, but you might not later, and drive on private property.
Well, I'm sure I've, I've acquired the property, and I've acquired more property. I have no intents to sell it. I mean, in fact, we're developing warehouses and things there to help utilize it. And I, I served on this commission in the nineties, and so thank y'all for your service. Uh, but, you know, and so the sixty-foot right of ways, and, you know, that's why we left the contours of that other lot, you know, so that you have the width of the sixty feet, plus you have the road bed. It was built, you know, with, to good standards, with good, good contractors. The, the tenant to the west is, uh, is a contractor. We constructed the road with base compaction. It's been there for twenty years and handled a lot of traffic over the years. And so there's, um, actually, I mean, that's just, that's the setup with it. And again, the business is existing, and we're conducting business there, and we're planning to, my son just came to work for me, and he's thirty-one years old, and he's buying the business, and we plan on being there hopefully for thirty more years, good Lord willing. But, uh, but there are three paved entrances to the subject property, excuse me, off of the adjacent property, which has a twenty-foot paved road that runs well beyond the, uh, the south end of the subject property. Thank you.
It, it sounds like your concern is the future ownership of that accessway, and perhaps you could introduce a condition with your motion, or with a motion where, where that this approve, this site plan approval is conditioned on that remaining in the applicant's ownership, or him obtaining an easement if he were to ever sell that adjacent parcel.
Can we ask for an ass, access easement on that? Is that?
Well, I think if you.
Because it's not part of this application.
I don't, I don't think it has to be if there's common ownership. I mean, I don't think that there's a rule that he has to have all entry and exits owned this parcel that this loading bay is on.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I understand your concern, and presumably, he would have the same concern. He wouldn't want to sell out his access. So it seems like a simple solution would be to say, listen, you either, for this to remain active, you either got to have, own that pro, drive, or you have to, if you were to sell it, make sure you have an easement when you do sell it. And I think that, it sounded like that would resolve your primary concern.
Yes.
Well, they would only, I guess I just don't want to tie up the property too much if we don't have to. If, if he wanted to sell that to somebody that didn't want a loading dock, then they don't need an easement. If they're going to tear that down and put, let's just say something else later.
He has, he's going to have three access points, or at least two access points coming off that side road. It's not just the loading dock. He's accessing the twelve parking spaces from that same drive, so, uh, right, now I hear what you're saying. If he didn't want to do that, then they would have changed their site plan to get access from the, uh.
Milton Jones.
Yeah.
Correct. And if, and if we came, based on what I'm seeing here, if we decided to do something else, we'd come back before this body, and somebody would say, at that point, we'd have to do something to deal with that traffic going back to that property. If anything was ever done with that property, then there'd be a requirement probably to make that a public road. If there was any further development on it or anything. I mean, that, that's how I've seen things work over the time. We're just merely asking to add a fifty by fifty foot addition to the west side of an existing business, and would appreciate y'all's support. And we will comply with everything we've said we've done. I again apologize for my rudimentary, uh, skills on the, uh, on the paper, but we will make sure we build it to what we said. We'll do what we say we're going to do and get it approved before we move in. Thank you.
Matthew, I'm good with your suggestion. I think as long as the applicant owns both parcels, it's not an, an issue presently. It only becomes an issue if he decides to sell the, the southern parcel. He's going to have to give an easement to this piece of, to access through that. Uh, which I'm, I'm good with that, but that's. All right, any other questions for staff? Or any other concerns you have we need to address before we have a motion?
Yeah, I have one. If we, um, took a vote and made a, another condition that we have, um, engineered site plans to back up what these drawings are, instead of tabling it and say, come back in a month with that, could we do that today?
So there was a recent amendment to the zoning ordinance within the past year that required as-built drawings, and honestly, hadn't even thought about this, but, so it's already in there. He is, before he gets the CO for this building, he's going to have to submit those as-built drawings. Uh, they'll go to our department, and our department will go and make sure he's built it the way that it was stated here.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second?
Subject to conditions?
Yes.
Okay. McKenney's made a motion to approve. Mr. Brewer's seconded the motion. Any question or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Two more cases. Our next case is, uh, case number P dash one eight zero zero four Bella Sarah Gardens. Does anybody need to clear prior communication on this item? Okay. Matthew's going to do our presentation on this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for your time. Um, this is a review of a prior conditional use approval for Bella Sarah Gardens. At the time, that case number, uh, was what you see on the screen, and so we're deciding to stick with that. Going to go over this pretty quickly, and that way we can kind of just get right down to those critical questions. So the issue under review is the compliance with those prior requirements as part of this conditional use. It's an event venue. Um, it's in the Loxley area, as you can see here on this map, um, kind of, uh, south and, uh, west of Loxley. In terms of staff recommendations, y'all know from our past, uh, experiences with event venues that these can be tricky, so we reserve, uh, making a recommendation until after the public hearing, though we have talked with legal counsel and have some ideas as to what, what we might recommend, or where we're thinking this could go. Uh, this is, uh, the property right here. You can see it's zoned RSFE. It's surrounded by RSFE. Here's some aerial imagery. We're going to kind of just zoom in so you can kind of see the surrounding area. See, it's, uh, about fifteen acres. It's surrounded by a lot of residential properties, um, who understandably, um, enjoy kind of larger estate-type lots in a, a more quiet rural environment. You zoom in, you can see, uh, for, I'll back up a second. There's a house toward the front of the property, and then toward the back of this property is where most of the event structures take place. Toward the very bottom of the screen, it's almost cropped out. There's also a, um, a barn of sorts, um, an open trust barn, I think they call it, uh, or chapel where they also perform weddings and stuff. I, I've, um, not personally visited the site, but code enforcement has made a number of visits out there. This is a side uh, view of the development. Again, it helps kind of see the event portion in the, uh, back half or north part of the property and the home toward the front. There are two entrances. Apparently, when folks come in, they enter through the, uh, southern driveway, which kind of snakes up, and then they depart through the northern driveway back onto the road there. Just as a reminder, the whole purpose of zoning is to encourage transitions from less intense uses to more intense uses. Um, we see that in, uh, what we call the rural transect image here, but I like to use this to illustrate conditional uses, because people say, well, what is a conditional use? Well, we understand that there are some uses, um, that are allowed in one district, but then the very next district, obviously, those uses would be disallowed in that prior district. But we understand that there are some uses that are just naturally, they're kind of, they would, they could be allowed in this district, but maybe would be more appropriate from the, for the next, but they kind of straddle the line. And that's what a conditional use is. It, it kind of lives in those, uh, that gray area between what is allowed and not allowed within a certain, uh, zoning type. Here's a quick quote, quote from the Citizens' Guide to, uh, Planning About Conditional Uses. Conditional uses require the applicant to get someone's approval, that's this planning commission, before the use will be allowed. Generally, conditional uses include those that might or might not have adverse impacts on their neighbors depending on what is developed nearby and the proposed layout of the development. Um, so here's the language from when this was approved, uh, that it was approved under, "The planning commission may, um, under prescribed standards, yada, yada, yada," and then it gets to the end, "The county reserves full authority to deny any request for a conditional use, to impose conditions on the use, or to revoke approval at any time upon a finding that the permitted use will or has become unsuitable and incompatible in its location as a result of any nuisance or activity generated by the use." So due to their sensitive nature, conditional uses are site plan specific. They have to submit a site plan that gets approved, and if they're going to make any changes, they have to come in front of you with that change. Quick timeline of, of events on this particular property. Uh, it was initially approved to host weddings in September twenty fourteen, so we're approaching uh, nine years away from that, with operating hours ending at eight AM. Um, this is an excerpt from that notice of action, and you can just kind of see those primary, uh, points highlighted there. We'll continue on. In late twenty seventeen, uh, they reached out again, um, requesting approval to host other events on the property within, uh, with operating hours ending at ten PM, and they received that approval, and you can see that approval here. Notice number five, it says, "Auto, hours of operation will be extended to no later than ten for music and all event activities." And then they also added this requirement that no volume of music shall be regulated, so no sound shall be audible from the property lines. Now, um, I'm sure we received complaints before that time period, but that's really the time period where we started, where our current records show a lot of complaints. And so you see those red lines there, um, that's a rough representation of the, of the numerous complaints we received during that time period. On May third, twenty eighteen, they came and requested an open-air chapel approval, um, and also, and as part of this, there was discussion about their other conditions. And they added a condition that events have to end by nine PM, um, and no amplification of music outside of enclosed structures, and they wanted it to come back again in four months to see how uh, that was working. So there is that approval, uh, right there. So we continued to see, receive, uh, it was pretty quiet, uh, around that timeframe, but then, uh, complaints ultimately continued to come in. In twenty eighteen, they came back, um, and, uh, they did remove the, the four-year, the four-month temporary approval, and the case continued from there. And I just put a red bar there because we've just continued to receive tons of complaints, um, through that timeframe. Here is an example of complaints from the past two years that we've received for the site. Code enforcement's here. They're the ones who respond to these. Uh, this one's been difficult because it takes place on the weekends. If you remember, a recent event venue we had concerns with, it wasn't so much noise, so you could go by on Friday afternoon and take pictures of the site and see all the compliance issues. Uh, this one has been primarily noise-centric, and that tends to be on a Friday night or Saturday night, and I do want to thank our code enforcement team, because they've gone out there on, uh, on the weekends at night to just try and verify these complaints. So you see the ones that have been verified by staff. These are because they can hear noise from the property line. Uh, there have also been complaints that we've received or, um, have come through Facebook and different things like that. Now, I will say that I, I, I am roughly dividing this number. Probably about seventy percent of our complaints have come from one property owner, but we've received a number of complaints from other property owners, so it's not just one person complaining. Okay, uh, so that shows the temporary approval removed. So this brings us to April sixth, twenty thir, twenty twenty-three. We've just gotten so many complaints on this site, most recently about a week and a half ago, code enforcement went out there, clearly using amplified music well past nine thirty, uh, out on the lawn. We do have some general concerns or questions, so, so again, the issue under review is compliance with the previously approved conditional use. And I'm going to put that back up on the screen for a second, and note that number six, that volume of music shall be regulated, so no sound shall be audible from the property lines. I, I'm just going to say, we think that that is an unreasonable condition. And let me, but I'm going to, I want to explain further, because I'm sure that there are some folks who will be upset about that. It, it, depending on the night, will impact whether or not sound can be heard from the property line, and you could have, um, And you could have unamplified music potentially audible from the property line. So one thing that we're thinking is possibly removing that condition and then making it clear that we intend to strictly enforce all remaining conditions. So that way, if we go out there and we would also want to incorporate something where it's clear that code enforcement, the applicant understands code enforcement, can enter the property during an event. We're not going to disrupt the event or anything, but just to see if the amplification is being used outside or if the doors are thrown open to their inside facility, allowing all that amplified music to come out. And if that's the case, then we're going to bring it back in front of you all and recommend that you withdraw the conditional use. It'll just be as simple as that. The volume of music, no sound audible from the property line is just a nightmare for staff to try to enforce. There have been times, they'll tell you where they can go out there and they can faintly hear it, and they won't hear it, and then they'll hear it very faintly, like maybe a door open. Well, it's technically audible from the property line, but are we going to be able to support that if we try to close down a business on that basis? And we naturally have concerns there. So I'm going to pause there to see if you all have any questions, and you could open the public hearing, and then we could even throw up our formal recommendation if you'd like.
Ask you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Booyer, go ahead. Matthew, if you do away with number six, do you not need to do away with number eight as well?
So let me just flip forward to what is our kind of tentative thoughts as we've looked through this. We would propose modifying number eight to say something like, no amplification of music outside of the enclosed structures. And when amplified music is used within an enclosed structure, the doors of the structure shall not be left open. And so they do have, and I don't have a picture of it here, but the owner has submitted some pictures, and there's a PowerPoint here that she may show. They do have one very large enclosed, entirely enclosed barn. And so they would be able to use music and even amplified music within that structure, but it would, they would not be able to take that amplification outdoors.
Is code enforcement something you typically do after hours? Or is it more of a burden on the county to have to try to regulate this every weekend?
Yeah, well, no question, it's a burden on the county. I can tell you that our team is awesome, and they have never complained once about trying to do this. They've even told the neighbors, when the neighbors complain, say, hey, listen, call us on the weekend, and if we're available, we'll go out there and verify this. And sometimes it's difficult to find a time when they can coordinate all that. But there's no question, it certainly is a burden. It makes it difficult to regulate with these conditions on there.
Go ahead.
I do have a question. I don't have your timeline on my, but there were no complaints until they started having music later?
So I don't, that was in 2018 when that was approved. And what I would say is, we only had one code enforcement officer for the entire county at that point in time. And I don't think we had anything documented in our system prior to that first one that I showed on there, but that doesn't mean there weren't complaints. We just don't have documentation of them.
So Matthew, you said a while ago, when they did go out, I don't know if you meant this every time, but was it always fairly low? Or were there times that it was obtrusive? I mean, do we know that it was, and I know that's a level that's...
Ben, could you come up here real quick? Ben was out there the most recent time. And then Vince, maybe you can step up here as well real quickly.
I personally don't like the statement either because you could be talking at the property line. That's not, to me, that's not terrible for an adjacent property owner. But if it's blaring, and then we're getting into a category, who measures that level? But I'm just curious, was it loud or was it always a low volume?
So I went out the last visit, which is the 25th of March, just a couple of weeks ago. And I got to the site at about 7:45 p.m. And from 7:45 to about 9:00, I would say it would be that ambiguous. I could hear it every now and again, but I don't know if that would qualify. But at 9:00, it started with live music. So from 9:00 to 9:00, yes.
Okay.
It's like a concert band that I could loudly hear, you know, I don't know.
So that was after 9:05?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Matthew? Okay.
I do also want to mention, the applicant has handed out packets to you all. We did also receive a handwritten note from a member of the public who said they weren't able to be here for health reasons, but have said they've come here in the past with complaints about the noise and essentially wanted to restate their concerns about the noise levels out there. And I'm pulling up our list of folks who have signed up to speak. I apologize.
Matthew, where's the letter you're talking about?
So the letter, I think it was...
They're inside the, the loose leaf inside the...
And this letter was delivered today, and you all do not have a copy of it.
I see two supporting letters. No...
Those are, those are from the applicant. This letter you do not have a copy of.
Oh, okay.
It was just hand-delivered, or hand-delivered, I think, today. But I gave you a brief summary of it.
And then the photos we're looking at, that is what?
So those were provided by the applicant, and when she comes up to speak, she can address whatever those are.
In fact, unless you have something else, I'm ready. Okay. Robin Gregorius?
Good evening, members of the board. Yes, let's start with the bad part. We did indeed go past 9:00. I'm going to start with the happy part. I'm going to read very quickly. I know your time is valuable, as is everybody wants to get out of here. So we passed the 9:00 mark, and why did we? Well, Hulu has discovered the garden at Bella Sarah. So they filmed four times on our property. We're very blessed. They aired episode one in September from Bella Sarah. Just filmed the season finale, Cliffhangers Romance Across America. They set up the band before I got there. And God knows, do you think I'm going to go in there and act like an Alabama woman and pull the chords out? No. The band is supposed to be inside. We have not had a band outside. They brought in somebody from Tennessee. They had production companies, 150 people, cast members, open cast call, grand hotel bus came in. So I was not going to put a bad name on Baldwin County's experience with this film company. We did go past 9:00. I think it was 10:30. There was a live band. I have two letters, the first of which, they agree when they come back, we're already contracted to be in this series. So very blessed indeed. The band will be inside unless they receive an exception from the members of the board. They did in error when I told the producer Lauren from Fairhope, Lauren Weber, they talked to somebody at the Chamber of Commerce by mistake. I didn't tell them to do that. I said, talk to you guys. Okay, April 2nd. To whom it may concern, I am writing to share my support for Bella Sarah Gardens. We recently filmed a romantic comedy series, Love and Fairhope, for Hulu at this location, and we had an incredible experience. As a TV director and producer with almost 20 years' experience in the film industry, I have yet to experience such a professional, amenable, and spectacular filming location. The owner and her staff were kind, creative, hardworking, and professional, and most importantly, honest. Rare to find these qualities in today's cutthroat business world. We fell so in love with this venue that not only is it the centerpiece of our premiere episode for Love and Fairhope, but it's also the centerpiece of our finale episode. We held a beautiful Magnolia Ball at Bella Sarah Gardens for the show, and it was breathtaking. This 15-acre venue has detailed features that will be a showcase of South Alabama's hidden beauty. We are of the opinion that Bella Sarah Garden is an asset to the Gulf Coast and do believe that America is sure to fall in love with it too. We look forward to returning for season two for continuation of the Magnolia Ball. Best, Lauren Weber, yada, yada, executive producer, creator, Love and Fairhope Hulu. Real quick, the other one, the executive.
We have these.
You have that?
Yeah, we've heard of them.
So if you care, and I don't know if you had time to read them, but I would appreciate it. Right. I have banned six vendors from my property. Sometimes when you have a cultural wedding, whether it's Mexican, you know, other ethnicities, the music tends to be a genre that I don't approve of. I don't want to hear this, you know, blah, 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 you, and then this, this, and that. I will go up to the DJ and I'll say, excuse me, you need to lower the volume. It's in my contract. It says, I control the sound of the music. It's very much in the contract. They tend to lower it. I've had at least six instances where I was not met with compliance, maybe because he didn't like me telling him that. They've been banned from the property. Six vendors will not be allowed. That will happen in a venue. You will have an outside vendor come in, whether it's music, flowers, or whatever. They don't meet your expectations, you're banned. Can't come back to Bella Sarah. Go somewhere else and be annoying. So that's probably most likely one of those instances where I have banned specific people from Baldwin County, Mobile County, and as far away as Pensacola, you can't come back. You're making trouble. You cannot respect my rules. So that's what I've been doing. Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question. I applaud you for building your business and having Hulu come out there and do the production, but isn't that going to increase and bring more business as there's awareness to this? And how do you see handling the noise problem and keeping everything contained below 9:00 p.m.?
Well, I didn't bring my decibel reader up with me, but it's high quality. And like I said, I'll have a team that can go in, go around the property. I have a large forest. I have vegetation. I also put up a fence around the entire back of the venue of my own free will. Very, it's only six feet, not eight foot, but another fence that I put around the entire perimeter with more vegetation behind it.
So are you, are you closing the event, event venue at 9:00?
Yes, ma'am. I did go over whenever all the lights and the people flew in, and I was mortified. I had to go with, and they had to do the scenes, get the cut, and say, wrap, and that was it. So it was about 10:30, and I do apologize for that. I've already told Lauren that they need to be more prepared. Come back a second.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Faircloth. I live, my property is adjacent to Bella Sarah Gardens. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I have a piece of property that's on the west of her. It's a two-lot property that I bought, that my husband and I bought 49 years ago. The clear area there on the west is my property that's vacant. I live probably south of that cul-de-sac area. I cannot hear her every time in my home, but sometimes I can hear it in my home. On my porch, I can sing along. There's a lot of space. That's my property. And by the way, the reason she put the fence up, original fence, was because she was required to either do that or shrubbery because she had pine tree rows that she thought was going to contain the sound. It wasn't by choice in the beginning. And by the way, she left, she told us last meeting, which was about four years ago, that she had to move because she needed privacy and peace. And we want privacy and peace. I haven't been complaining in the last couple of years, but I could have complained. I kind of gave up. I just figured nothing was going to be done, even though we were promised from the beginning that this could be enforced. It would be enforced, and she promised. She had a compelling presentation explaining how she was going to control the sound. She had hired people to come out there and tell her how it could be done, and she made all kinds of promises. Feel like we've been promised a lot of things, and it just hasn't happened. My biggest problem is the sound. And we were asked not to complain about little bit of noise that drifts over. It's going to happen, even if you just have a neighbor that doesn't have music. I don't complain about that. I complain when it's obnoxiously loud. And my neighbor who sent in the letter and I will sometimes communicate with each other when it's going to be a bad one because we can tell this one's going to be really bad. And we feel like it's when she opens the doors. We know it's amplified. You can tell when it's amplified. And by the way, her chapel was built without a permit, and that's why she made some concessions so that she wouldn't be shut down or have repercussions at that time. That's why we have a 9:00 instead of a 10:00. She said she would do that for our neighbors. I wasn't going to talk this long, but I'm sorry. I'm passionate about this because I like my peace and quiet. I try to be reasonable. I think the limitations were reasonable because they were based on what would be required if you were in the municipalities, that they would be required to keep the sounds at the border, which, again, I say, they said, please be reasonable about what sounds come over. And I've tried to do that. But I hope you all can help us. I hope you, I ask you to please help us.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then I have Metz, M-E-T-S-C-H. I have Judy Wright. No Judy? That's all I had signed up. So you do want to speak, or you don't want to speak to them?
I'm Nerissa Nelson, like you all don't know that. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I've been hired by the property owners that are right at the road here. Says 51 lot or whatever it is, right here at the road that is on number 49. There are several things. Number one, I want to compliment Matthew on his presentation. He pretty much covered just about everything. There are a couple of things that I can't find. Number one, when they first started this thing, which has started in 2014, this, they were guaranteed, basically, by the powers that be at the time, which are not these people right now, that it was going to be a wedding venue only. And of course, that morphed into something else, which now is considered a country club, not as, I guess, big as a country club. They're not going to have big athletic events and everything else. But instead of having nice little chapel weddings now, they're having people come out there and record series out there. They're having runway events. They're having concerts out there. They're having theatrical productions out there. So it's exploded from what it was initially started to be. Matt, can you put up the use table?
I do not have a copy of that in the slideshow.
Oh, no. Okay. What about your rainbow thing, your little rainbow compatibility or whatever it is? There you go. What, I'm assuming that residential, single-family estate district is like green.
So it would be, right, it's the border district from green to yellow.
From green to yellow.
It's the least intense form of single-family.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that a wedding venue or a country club, which I still cannot find a code for, I guess, for country club anywhere around, is somewhere luck in the red?
So it is allowed with conditional use approval in a number of different districts, including RA, RSFE, and then I think it's by right in several of the commercial districts.
So that would be the red districts that would be by right?
That's correct.
Correct. So we're going from greenish-yellow to red, folks. So we're going from greenish-yellow to red, folks, in this single-family estate district. We're not talking about a subdivision here by these people. We're talking about large tracts of land where people have invested to live out in the country and not have this kind of stuff up next to them. Noise, of course, is the biggest problem all the time, and the decibel levels are frightening out there. I wonder how many times code enforcement has gone out there that they've not found a violation. I guess we won't know that because we've had changes in code enforcement officers, too. Traffic on the side of the road. One of the things they're not supposed to be doing is having anybody park on the side of the road, where they're, we've got pictures, parking up and down the side of the road when they're having these events. They put in another driveway. They put in a commercial driveway, which is right next to my client's property. Can you bring that back up again, that aerial view? And in doing that private, yeah, right in there, they've put another driveway into right there, a commercial, and in doing that, they took out the 25-foot buffer. They were supposed to have hedges. That hedge, 25-foot hedge buffer is no longer even there. They have people spending the night there at the venue. In fact, they advertise it. They advertise that, you know, have this for your venue, come spend the night. So I don't even know if that's allowed. I guess it may be allowed in country club. I don't know. I can't find a country club designation. And, you know, those people are hooting and hollering all night long. It's not just music. And my clients are up front, folks. They're not backed, you know, where the other ladies is. My people are up front, and they can stand on their porch or in their driveway and hear people hooting and hollering and driving up and down the driveway, going out on 49. No one lives there. They moved. This is not, and one of the first things that are in every one of the reviews that you have given this conditional use for is that it will remain a single, or remain residential. Principal use of the subject property will remain residential. Well, it's not residential anymore. It's totally commercial, the whole thing. I don't know if they've got a caretaker living up front, or somebody's aunt from, you know, third-party, you know, third cousin removed up front, or something like that, but this property is being used totally for commercial purposes. All right, the changes since 2014. You know, every time there's been a change since 2014, it's because she's been caught doing something that she wasn't supposed to be doing. She, wedding venue only. She started doing the other things, the other, renting it out for other purposes. Noise level at the property line, of course, is the same thing. She built the chapel without having a permit. She came here to ask for forgiveness for that, too. Times of operation, in and out, that's been, that's been, you know, total thing here as far as, let's negotiate with the times of operation. Days of the week to operate also was part of the negotiations. I've read the transcripts from these proceedings, folks, every one of them. This woman has had ample opportunity since 2014. If she was gonna invest money in this thing and have this as her ongoing business, to have corrected or to have complied with the regulations that have been imposed upon her by you. And the people that are now having to live with the fact that she doesn't do it, she's a moving target, she'll do it for a month or so, and then she'll come back in and it'll be, you know, more of the same. But the people, or the people in the neighborhood that are having to live in their residential, single-family estates with a hangout going next door. I mean, that's just quite frankly what it is. Her excuses are constant. Every time she comes up here, and I've, like I said, I've read the transcripts, all this many of transcripts, and the rest of this up here are the complaints that the people in the neighborhood have filed with the county. Complaints. I don't understand why we're just here now. This should've been happening two years ago, three years ago. We should be here. She says she's banning people. Apparently, she can't get a hold of her own business. If she's having to ban people even now, since 2014, you would think she would have built up people that she can allow there and people she can't allow there in some way to enforce the regulations that have been placed on her, time and time again. And as you can tell, not only by my demeanor, but by her demeanor up here, this is nasty in this neighborhood. This neighborhood's going to explode if y'all continue, and I understand, wasn't y'all, continue to allow this to go on. She needs to be shut down and this returned to a single-family estates.
Okay. Is there anybody else that didn't sign up that wanted to speak to this? Come give your name.
I'm very nervous. Excuse me. My name is Kim McKee, and my husband and I own the home at the very top there, so directly to the east of the venue. There, every night that they have a wedding, we hear the music. And it usually doesn't bother us. Sometimes we can go out on the porch, listen to the music, but it's always audible. We always hear it every time. The problem that I have is that they don't restrict to the 9:00 PM. And the couple of years that we've owned the home, we've seen, it seems to get further and further, you know? 9:10, 9:15, 9:20, and then they'll go back to 9:00, and then 9:20, 9:30, and then they'll go back to 9:00. I guess somebody has complained. The biggest problem was on the 25th of March, when they had their Hulu celebration, whatever, that the music started at 9:00, and it was loud, and she admits it fully. It was loud and obnoxious. And from my living room, I was able to tell, the band was from Nashville. They were congratulating the newly engaged couple. In my living room, door shut. That is not appropriate. And that was at 10:00. And that's the problem I have. I don't have a problem with a wedding. Weddings are great. I love weddings. My mom was a wedding coordinator. I'm a big fan of weddings. I've been married for many years. But just to restrict it to the hours, when you go way past the hours, and when it's something like an outdoor concert that we weren't even notified about, we didn't even know. I found out afterwards that it was, that they were doing the Hulu, the Love and Fair Hope reality show. So, I mean, just to let us know, hey, you know, we're gonna be filming this, this, you know, do you have any problems with it? I mean, yes, I have a problem with it, but after the fact, it's just very unsettling that we bought this house and the property to live out in the country and have peace and quiet. And to be up at 10:30 listening to very loud amplified music is unacceptable.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, anybody else?
Yes, I think I have your vote, please.
Hang on a second. Give us your name, please.
My name's Charles Ellis, and I live in the house with the round, roundabout driveway to the east of the garden. And there's several, probably four to five acres between me and that property. And I can hear the music every time they have a festival, and I largely ignore it. I can be out on my back, outdoor kitchen, and I hear pretty much every word being said and all the songs. And mostly I ignore it. I play music outside as well, and I've never really cared, but these productions that they've been putting on. I have an autistic child that's highly sensitive to sound, and that music was playing until after 11:00, and he could not sleep. And you could be in the front side of my house, away from that property, and hear the beat. You could hear the words like it was a honky-tonk on my back porch, and I find that highly unacceptable.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Please, let's don't get into a, she said, he said. Just address the facts.
No, sir. I just wanna be completely honest and rebuttal what I know is not true. Okay. Real quick. I've had two businesses. I built an assisted living facility from the ground up. I went to Washington in 2012 and represented the entire state of Alabama. I do know how to operate a business. Okay. Sold that during COVID. Now, I wanna bullet point things that I know just about. Okay. Yes, therefore, I'm highly capable. 9:00 PM is our sparkler exit. We give out the sparklers, they come out, they do their bend, they dip their twirl, it's over. People begin to disperse. 2:30 AM, I'd like to know when that happened. I already admitted Hulu came in. I did exceed our 9:00. 2:30 AM, I disagree with a lady. I disagree with the lady that came in. She's legal representation, but she needs to be accurate with her comments. Okay, let's back it up to residency. Come to my house right now, Bellicera House, come upstairs, I'll show you my closet, my toothbrush, everything. I still have a residency. Do I have another house? Yes, I do, because I also have a husband that I have to go home to. Fair Hope Inspector, when I built the venue, they mistakenly told me to put bulletproof glass, every antique door that I had. The inspector said, take it out. Fair Hope Inspector came out and said, no, you weren't supposed to put bulletproof glass in all of your antique doors and windows. Did I know anything about construction? Not particularly. I said, well, look, I need to build this chapel. Well, when you get ready to build it, just go ahead. I'll come out and inspect it. Made a mistake? Yes, I did. But are you gonna crucify me for that? No overnight stays? Excuse me? How do you know who's staying in the house? I disagree with that.
Address us, and we'll look back.
Yes, nobody's staying on site, except family or myself. Vendors, you're gonna ask my qualifications to have a vendor. Do you know anybody that comes into a wedding for the first time when they play music? No, you don't. Do you know what the cake tastes like? They're banned. The cake was terrible. Looked beautiful, but it tasted like a shoe. That's how I ban my vendors. So you're making an opinion of me when you don't know anything at all. You're just making hearsay. Driveway, that was an existing driveway on that property? No. The vegetation, that, the vegetation rule was around the venue. Her mistaken response about me knocking down trees and anything? No, that was an existing driveway from, it was farmland years ago, Baldwin County. The music till 11:00, 11:30. What about the neighbors that I have audio recordings of with the bonfire we can see across the fence? How come these neighbors are not fussing about particular boom boxes that the windows shake? Which of the windows don't shake in my antique building, because I'm very protective of what I've invested? What about their music going to 11:00, 11:30? It's not me, it's those neighbors. And I have audio, video, and the bonfire we can see across the fence. So these are just a full, a few bullet points I wanted to come back. And there's more that was said that I totally disagree with, so I guess I'll be back at the next hearing.
Does your parking ever exceed your capacity where they had to park out on the county road?
I've had two problems. The Grand Hotel sent out a bus without my knowledge because the party planner, Jenna Lane, did not tell me a party bus was coming to pick up. They could not fit through my bridges. I have three bridges that you go through. One's a covered bridge. They did park out of the road. That became part of my contract, no parking at the highway. Sometimes does somebody pull over without my knowledge? If they do, I go out there. So far, to my knowledge, this has happened with two buses. Two buses from the Grand Hotel. That is not part of our plan to conduct a wedding. And ma'am, you asked me a question earlier about more business, more business. My southern brides are our priority. I don't need all these rich people coming in from out of state if they wanna have a wedding at Bellicera. My local brides come first, so I don't plan on having any more weddings than what I do now. In fact, I wanna expand to a different location, to a 100-acre site that I hope to procure in the next few years, depending on what happens with the interest rates and the current presidency. So that's where I'm at with that. So I ask for your understanding, and I'll be glad to present any sound recordings you want, but I do know that a lot of these statements were erroneous and completely off the top of my head. Can't believe it. So can I?
Let me ask you this. One thing that was brought up, do you have other type uses there other than weddings?
I do, I did do a charity show. In fact, I came before the board trying to get permission. She's bringing up the charity show. Well, let's bring it up. I had people flying in from across the United States. It was for an anti-bullying campaign. That was a couple of years ago. I came before. The board paid $2.75, got shot down. One person voted overnight stay. I did a runway show. It was charity. I didn't make anything. I've done two charity events. Yes, I have.
Okay.
Ma'am, what percentage of your business is non-weekend business?
Occasionally, I'll have a weekday wedding, like a military wedding, where the gentleman's getting shipped off, the bride wants to get married for insurance purposes. That's usually a two-hour elopement wedding, but those are rare, very rare. Any wedding's gonna be on a Friday, a Saturday, or Sunday. Of course, Saturday is the day that most brides wanna get married because people come in from out of town. So 99.9% were weddings.
What's the average size of the attendance at your weddings?
Weddings have gotten much smaller due to budget constraints and catering with the economy, so the average wedding is 100 people, I would say. That's considered the median wedding, 100.
Okay. Anything else?
Is that him?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Can we actually have the applicant or the owner come back up one more time? I wanna ask you real quickly about the conditions that we've thrown up here. Do you have an issue with these proposed conditions, knowing that if they're violated, we're gonna come back with a recommendation to revoke the conditional use?
Right. I want to record, professionally hire somebody to record from different addresses of the people that are complaining. The decibels, I need a decibel to achieve.
I wanna point out that we were removing the volume of music from the property line, okay?
Right.
It's a simple thing. No operation after 9:00 PM.
Right.
And we wouldn't, so we wouldn't expect any music to be playing after 9:00 PM.
Right.
And we would not, no outdoor amplification, and you can't be keeping the doors open of your indoor facility where the music's playing. If we were to ever come up and find those three things in existence, then we would come back and recommend.
Well, I can start the sparkler exit, say, at 10 till 9:00. That's just sparklers.
I mean, what I'm asking is.
Yes, I will agree.
Are you okay with these conditions up here?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yes.
Now, we have the condition, the residence on the property shall remain the primary residence of the applicant or a member of the applicant's family. Is that one gonna be an issue?
I still have residency. Yes, I'm continuing to live in the house.
But it doesn't sound like it's your primary residence. I think our main objective is we wanna make sure that that residence is indeed a residence. I mean, I'm necessarily concerned whether or not someone's in there all the time. I wanna make sure it's not a lodging house for the guests.
Yes, sir. They're, we opened at 8:00 AM till 9:00 PM. That's a 13-hour window. 9:00 to 10:00 is clean up, pack up, get your cake, out the door, close the gate. So the girls come into my house, the bridal party. They use everything, the master bedroom, there's two bedrooms, there's two bathrooms, the downstairs, the kitchen, there's a dining room, there's a double stair, there's a staircase. They have the house all day until they go to the chapel, they get married. 9:00, it's over. By 10:00, everything's gonna get out of that house, and they're out the gate. So the house is being used by the bridal party. It is. I have a little barn where the guys have a pool table, and they have a little bar, and they watch TV, and yeah, the guys hang in their spot, the girls are in their spot. It's the 15-acre property. And I'm sorry, my pictures didn't come up. You probably don't know what I've built because my PowerPoint's not up there, or you would understand what I have on the property.
And we do have your PowerPoint available. Probably the easiest thing is for us to just email it to the planning commission.
Right.
I mean, I think they're pretty familiar, based on what they have seen.
Okay.
I think he's asking, do you live there full-time?
Full-time? I have to go home to my husband a couple of days a week, so I haven't counted the days. No, sir. I have my toothbrush, I have my clothes. I don't live there, what do you consider full-time, seven days a week?
That's your primary residence. You live there. That's where you go every day.
Yes, I'm in and out of there every day, and I'm sure they watch my SUV go through there, yes, sir, every day. And I've just installed cameras, too, around the property to make sure that vandalism stops and the garbage and the litter that I pick up constantly, trash bags, this full of litter, which I happily do. People cannot drive to Bellicera and see the trash.
And you have answered my question, so I do appreciate that.
Yes.
But some of that extra information doesn't really aid the specific question.
Yes.
So you are okay with these conditions as stated on here?
I will comply with ever, if you tell me to shave I will comply with ever, if you tell me to shave my head like Britney Spears, I'll do that right now. I will comply with every, whatever conditions you give me to continue with my business, which I've built from the ground up.
All right.
So, yes, sir. I comply with ever, whatever conditions.
And number eight is, there's not a time on that. That is no music.
Past 9:00?
No, no. That one is no doors being open when there's music.
That's, so that is no amplification, no amplified music outdoors. And, but to clarify, because I think what happens is they keep it indoors and then people will just prop the doors open possibly. So, and that.
Before 9:00?
That includes before 9:00 too. There's no timeframe for this requirement.
Well, the, right. The two antique main doors you have to leave open with the little, because of the gowns and the girls going in and out. They can't open the doors. They're from another country, they open right to left. The main entrance door where it says exit, we do have to leave at least one door open. People can't get in and out and carry a food, cup, plates. So, there are two antique doors that are like, I think they're 10-foot tall. So, just one set of doors would be open.
It sounds like you're telling me you cannot comply with these conditions.
Well, I can get a door person to stand there and open the doors the whole night. If I can't have not one door open to go in and out.
That might be what's necessary to resolve this.
Well, then I'll just hire a door person. I have staff. So, amplification, does that include a harp? If they're playing a harp with the microphone? Or that was a point somebody brought up to me, I might as well ask you now. Or violinist?
I mean, it says amplified music. Certainly, a violinist can be pretty loud when amplified. And a harp can be as loud as you turn up the amplification. At the end of the day, we've got to create something here that's enforceable or we just can't continue with it. It's not, it's not a compatible use, compatible conditional use if it's not something we can enforce.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. So, like the microphone when the pastor's speaking?
So, it does say.
No microphone with the pastor, just speak naturally?
It does say amplification of music specifically.
So, so the pastor's speaking, he can't have a microphone?
Oh, no, he can.
He can?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's right.
Okay. So, yes, I will close the doors and have somebody stand there in their uniform and open it throughout the like four-hour reception. Most receptions are four hours.
And planning commission, I know these are difficult cases. We do have legal counsel here. We can always, I hate to table something else. But we do have that option, so we can think about the best approach here. I don't know, we might even need to consider an executive session, next work session or something. So, I, this is difficult, you know?
So, how do we enforce? Matthew, we just do spot checks?
We would.
To make sure of time? I mean, don't take me wrong. I don't know you and I don't mean to imply anything. You could tell me all night long what you will do, but obviously, we have to, from our side, we would have to have somebody enforce this to know that it's being adhered to. So, do we have to send somebody out, obviously, to spot check these to make sure that it's being done?
That's right. That's what we, that's what we do.
Our neighbor reports. And then we check.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, Matthew, you feel comfortable with the recommendations? Or do you, are you?
I'm going to be honest, I, the one I don't feel comfortable with is number two because it doesn't sound like it's true right now. And I don't want to create something that we approve, knowing it doesn't, already doesn't exist.
So, if number two was not true, then the business could be closed down the next time you check and it's not a residential?
I also am a little concerned it could be a difficult one to prove it's not true, which kind of creates the difficulty. I think our primary concern is that it's not being leased for short-term overnight rentals. And I would almost be okay just changing that condition to that.
I would prefer that. Say what it can't be.
Erin, you have any thoughts? Do you think this is something we might need to just go ahead and table for a month? And just make sure we're comfortable with those condition changes?
I'm fine with the condition changes, I think. I don't, I mean, I think that under your broad discretion that you can have them. I don't know if, ah, I don't know if you need to table it, to think about it, to look at the PowerPoint. Is there any additional things that could be put in place to assist more? Issues that are there? I mean, you know, someone will have to figure out if these conditions are being followed or not. But unfortunately, that's the way it is with all the wedding venues. Or all the venues, I'm going to say. I'm not going to tear it down. Most of these events are all at night and they're mostly on the weekend. I mean, this is not our first throw to go with the venue issue.
No, it's not.
And I look at how you change that condition, Matthew. I mean, I think that's, I mean, it's better, but it's still difficult to define enforcement.
Yeah, I think what we would do here is, you're right, it's still going to be difficult to enforce. But we do deal with this a little bit around the county. And usually, if they're going to have this provision, it's advertised somewhere or a guest references it on a, you know, a profile response or a, you know, I'm thinking of the wrong word, I can't think of the right word right now, but.
Well, there's a contractual relationship that gets formed at some point.
Yeah.
But I don't know how we would, we would ever see that contractual relationship.
I, we could make a condition on here that the applicant provides us with a, their current copy of their license agreement for the provision of the facility and always has their most current version, a copy of it in our, in our files to make sure that all these conditions are at least documented in there as well. We would expect her to enforce them regardless of what the agreement says.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's very similar to the other one. We demanded the, the copy of the, you know, the parking contract agreement and things like that because that was a condition that we didn't feel was being met. So, I think that's entirely appropriate to add that condition here.
Matthew, I think that one of the things that one of the ladies said about not being notified about the Hulu event, I guess it was. I mean, there's a part of me that says that that, that those types of things are very good for the, for the area. Now, I do understand that you could add some type of notification of the neighbors. And you mentioned in your statement that they were hiring talent, extras, whatever. I mean, maybe the neighbors would like to participate as, as, as members of the audience or whatever, whatever they're doing. If they have a special event, not a constant situation, but when there's going to be a special event like that, notifying the neighbors and letting them at least know, and if they want to play, sign them up.
So, let me, let me just say, I don't like the fact that the Hulu thing has become such a central thing. We actually notified the applicant of our intent to put this on the meeting prior to the Hulu event and us realizing the Hulu event was even taking place. So, the, what happened on March 25th has no bearing on this being before y'all today. It just happened to happen a week after or so, we notified the applicant of our intent to bring this. So, there are other continuing issues outside of that. That's certainly another, another one.
No, no.
Steve.
Well, until I tell you to come back, you can't. And so, if I have to. Well, in just a moment.
I have another question. Go ahead. Go ahead, Diane.
Go ahead, but I want to ask a question.
Who?
Of him?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think 9:00 is late. When you have kids and, I mean, I just, because you typically are going to go over. There's going to be another song, there's going to be people leaving. I just think the original was 8:00. I just think that's a good time.
Good feedback.
If this is a conditional use for a wedding venue, then the Hulu production and filming crew was outside of that conditional use, is that correct?
So, it initially was a conditional use for wedding venue. It was changed in 2017, I think, to, to an event venue. And there was reference to the country club.
Yeah.
For a time, that all event venues were classified as country clubs in our zoning ordinance because that was the closest thing and that's just how that works in zoning. Now, our current zoning ordinance has event venue in it, but this was approved under that old version. So, it has been approved to hold more than just weddings.
More than just weddings?
That's right.
That is the current? Okay.
So, you just answered my question. We can't then restrict this to wedding venues only because it's already been approved for an event?
Well, you, no, you, you certainly could. You could say that this is a wedding venue only. Bring it back, that was on an original condition, you could bring it back to that original condition.
But the original condition, that didn't work with them either. They were still out of compliance with the original condition, correct?
If I go back to the very original condition, the very first one, they had the, I don't know that we ever got any complaints on this one. I'm guessing there probably were, so I don't want the public to think I'm saying that, that we didn't. But it appears, and they had an 8:00 PM and it was weddings only. And then it went to 10:00 PM, all events, and then they had a volume of music condition. And I'm sure that there were complaints based on the fact that people showed up to that one and probably requested that to be in there. And then it went to, back down to 9:00 PM at that point. I'm sorry if I said 10:00 AM earlier, I meant 10:00 PM if I said that. With a couple other things regarding amplification. And then this is the very latest one that was approved.
Any other questions?
Can we add specific wedding venue?
Sure, I can.
To the traditional, to the conditional use?
You can, yeah, you can restrict, I think, the type of occasion.
And as we did in a previous case, if there's contracts with Hulu to do something, we know the dates of those events. They still are going to close at 9:00, but we can allow those to continue to happen like we did with that other case.
Okay. While Matthew's doing this, we, we're changing quite a bit. So, the question's going to become, are we all comfortable with making all the changes now? Or is this stuff that we need to digest and to come back? You guys need to kind of, you're going to have to make the motions. I can't, but if you, if you.
Did we want to change the 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM? I know, I know that was brought up. I'm going to type it in here so everybody knows it's an option.
I'm sure we're going to have a different opinion. I understand where Diane's coming from. I personally don't have a problem with 9:00 o'clock. It's a weekend. Generally, it's, that's not a problem for me, but again.
Well, I guess you could have it like a certain time on the weekends and a certain time during the weekdays, right, Matthew?
Yeah.
I'm just throwing out, because that's how much discretion you guys have. You know, if you want to make it 8:00, you know, Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00, Friday and Saturday. I mean, just.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And what do you guys want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this. We're expecting to get a thumb drive or something of other information. We're rushing through trying to figure out what the right language is that will be compatible with, with what we believe and what the neighbors believe and what the owner believes are good ideas to make this a better situation. And so, I will, in fact, make the motion that we table this.
Okay.
I'll second.
Table it to.
Can we do June?
I'm going to say June for the same reason that we tabled the other one till June. We've got a very full calendar apparently coming up in May. So, I would table till June.
All right, so Mr. Buller has made a motion to table, seconded by Mr. Baez. Any question, comments on the motion?
Can we make this the primary focus of our next work session, or the work session in June?
Absolutely. We are, are you saying May or June?
June.
Okay. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Even though we're tabling this, we'd like to get a report if there's any more violations between now and then.
Yeah, it's probably worth, Jamie, to your point, it's probably worth staying that the current conditions will still run until our next time we look at this.
Yeah, I wish I thought ahead and I could put code enforcement cell phone number up on the screen. But no, absolutely. And seriously, if you are a member of the public and want to report this, come talk to us. We will give you a way to access us on the weekend so we can come and evaluate this.
Okay. We have a motion, it's been seconded. No other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we do have one more item for the members of the public. So, actually, email planning@baldwincountyle.gov with your information and we'll provide you a way to access us because we do have to finish up this meeting.
All right, we have one last item. We've been here barely long. Let's go ahead and move into that. Our next case is case number CSP 22-41, Ecovery LLC. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Okay. Ms. Boykin?
All right. The staff report I'm fixing to give is different from what has been, what's in your packet. The applicant has submitted quite a bit of more information that was asked of. And I'm going to go through the presentation. I have the old and what's new. So, the applicant is asking for a commission site plan approval. They're located in Planning District 12, in the Loxley area. They are zoned M1, light industrial. The industrial use is Ecovery. They're located off Railroad Avenue. They are asking for commission site plan approval for a new building on the subject property, which would be about 28,560 square feet. Here highlighted, you can see the subject property is zoned M1. To the north and south, it's zoned M1. To the west, you have some commercial zoning. And to the east, you have some rural agricultural zoning. Here are a picture of the subject property and some of the adjacent properties. Here's the requirements for the M1 zoning. This was a site plan that was submitted. They were recently here in June and got commission site plan approval for two buildings that are highlighted in blue. And now, they are asking for a new building where the red rectangle is. This is the building elevation that they're proposing. This is their parking plan. They have 24 loading and unloading spaces and they also have about 368 parking spaces. One thing that I asked of was the total impervious surface. And they provided that, as highlighted, it's 59%. We had asked for a better landscape plan, some, adding a little bit more along the frontage of the property. And this is the new landscape plan that they submitted. They added some more pine trees and along the front to beef it up a little bit. They had submitted. They had submitted the drainage narrative from the past application, and we asked that they submit a new one that included their proposed new building, which they did. They have a stamp plan and a new site plan with the contours on it. They also submitted their ADAM permit, which they were waiting on that, it took them a while to get that. We have no comments. We did have a comment from Highway, they didn't receive the full drainage plan, but that was before, that was earlier in the process, and they have received it. So they are requesting for an additional 28,560 square foot building. They have to get the commission site plan because of the total square footage, it's over 5,000. This was my original recommendation for A. The use does conform to the zoning ordinance, the M1, but below were some deficiencies that the applicant needed to address, which they did. They submitted a new storm water management, storm water management plan with a full drainage report showing maps and models. They put the impervious surface ratio on their site plan. They included a new parking plan. They also showed their loading and unloading spaces. They labeled some of the areas, the driveway access. And then they also submitted a new landscape plan to add a little bit more to the front. I know Highway received their drainage, their new drainage plan. They hadn't had time to completely review it, so my recommendation has changed to be approved. The last contingency is that Highway's approval of the drainage plan and turnout plan be contingent upon their approval. And then the others are the typical conditions that we put on the site, commission site plan approvals.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Yes?
It looks like the new building, the proposed building is on top of a lot line?
Let me go back. I believe it is north. The applicant or engineer might be able to point it out better, but I believe it's north of the.
See this? This one?
Mm-hmm.
Is it?
Well, it's the top parcel, it's south of that. It's in the middle of that larger parcel.
Okay, it just looks like they're building on top of a lot line, so.
It's like right in here is where they are.
I can't see it.
I think what Diane's referring to is the existing building that's across the property line.
Yeah, there's an existing building right here that's across the property line, but the new one's going right in here, if you can see my cursor. They could combine them, it would be up to the applicant.
I think that's a great question for the applicant, and we would, I think that's something we would like to see as well.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question. That's M1.
Correct.
How much bigger can that get before it's not considered M1 anymore? That's a pretty big facility.
It is. It's light industrial, it falls under the M1 zoning. We also have M2, which is a higher industrial. We may have, I don't know if we have any parcels in the county zoned M2, we might have one. But as long as they don't go over their impervious surface ratio, I know they might be coming back to get the property to the east, rezone to M1. We've had a pre-op meeting, but they, as long as they meet all the zoning requirements, they can keep on as M1.
Selena, do you know how close they are to their impervious coverage now? I saw, I can't read it, it's yellow.
Yeah, it says 59% for M1.
Is it 80?
0.8, 80%.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for staff? We have several people signed up. I'll start with James Waters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members, out of interest of time. I think I'm speaking for 10, 15 people, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Rather than them all speak four or five minutes, I'll just try to summarize it.
That'd be great.
I have one page. Okay, thank you for your opportunity to speak today. My name is James Waters. I've been a resident of Ballman County my entire life, and have lived in Locksley for 39 years. Sorry, I'm dry. My address is Cabinet Shop Road, I live about a quarter mile from Ecovery. I am due east, around the other side of RSF1, that long skinny lot in the middle of 40 acres.
Okay.
Okay. Regarding this case, I am asking that the application be denied. The area is zoned M1, and I'm not sure what you're talking about, the impervious ratio, but I was thinking light industry was type of business. Google's a wonderful thing. I think Ecovery started as light industry, but now all the aluminum grinding, shredding, smelting, and casting of ingots, to me, that is heavy industry. By trade, I'm a nurse, my last eight years was spent in industrial medicine. I was on the site at Odukampu, I've been on the site at Chevron, I've been on the site at all the big industry. That's heavy industry. So in my opinion, they have exceeded their requirements for the current zoning. One of the requirements for the M1 are, and I'm quoting the regulation, "to be a protected environment, clean, quiet, free of hazardous and objectionable emissions, and generate little industrial traffic." In my opinion, Ecovery does not meet these requirements for M1. As far as clean, the dust kicked up from the flow of delivery trucks, shipping is not acceptable. On many days, you can see it blowing across the Black Divine Road. It's like a thick fog, and there are no buffers along that road. I saw with the no buffers, there is a, there are stacks of scrap metal piled pretty much all over the property, and probably can see it on a detailed map. A requirement for being quiet, first of all, Ecovery is not quiet. Most every day, all day and past midnight, there are sounds of machinery running, the grinding, the sounds of truck vehicles moving in and out, moving the equipment around, moving the stacks of metal. The noise is loud enough to be heard in my home a quarter mile away, that's with the doors shut and the TV playing. I can still hear the track stuff. And it's been so loud at times that my wife has had to wear earplugs to sleep at night, and that's pretty loud. And we just had new windows installed, and I thought that would help, no. Another require is the objectionable emissions, emissions. There's the smell, many days there, depending on the wind, the smell that resembles burning rubber or plastic. There are days it will make your eyes burn, and it irritates your breathing. There are normal chemicals and gases and byproducts of aluminum recycling, none of which are good for humans. And I don't know what all they are, a lot of them I can't pronounce, and I guess it matters at this point. Other objectional emissions I have are the amount of lights they have on the place. When I moved there 39, or 30 something years ago, I could see the stars out the front and the back, and right now I can't see anything out the front except a glow in the dark. And I can actually walk out my house between the barn, and the lights are so bright that it casts my shadow across my barn, and that's a quarter mile away. And on the application, I saw that the staff here recommended that this be approved with conditions. And just one thing I wanted to point out, that the staff states the adjoining properties are M1, light industrial, and RA, rural agriculture. Well, adjoining this Ecovery property, there are two residences. Both of them on Black Divine Road, one is the northwest corner, and one is the northeast corner. And maybe somebody's here from those residences tonight. So they are adjoining, they do touch these properties. And in addition, within a quarter mile of Ecovery, there are 24 other residences. Now, it is true that adjoining them on the backside, there's a 600 buffer of agricultural land that's being farmed, but the yellow area is a subdivision that's been approved, and then you draw your little circle around it, and there's 24 houses within a quarter mile. My comment is, I dare say any of these people would talk about the improvement of the quality of life that Ecovery has given to them. I oppose any further building at the current site. In my opinion, they have expanded outside the scope of light industry, and they're not properly zoned. That's my opinion. And I'm not against recycling, I've used to take newspapers and stuff to the town hall, and I'm for that, I think it's a good idea, but I think they've exceeded their, what they intend to do on the site. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mike Blaze?
Good evening, Sarp, keeping y'all. I'll keep this brief, I won't repeat what he said, other than the noise is, I live much closer than he does. I live in an old farmhouse that sits back off of Black Divine Road, one of the older properties there, and all this comes in. We weren't notified when they purchased the last land coming down Black Divine. It is so noisy, and it's not. Sometimes, it is 24 hours a day now. Three o'clock in the morning, beeping and buzzing, our dogs hit the wall, barking because they're trying to protect us, because something goes on there, and it wakes up the whole house. It's usually worse on Sunday nights, which may be because of price of electricity at nighttime. I don't know how industrial electricity prices work, but concern on just this building, there's so much concrete, so much metal. I see they've got drainage plans and this, that, and the other, with the amount of pollutants and dust that's on that facility, where's that water going? I mean, you can't stop dust from going downstream, and it's all going to end up going back toward the stop sign at Cabinet Shop and Divine. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Arp, you want to wait until we have our, we have two more, let you and the applicant. Maybe you rebuttal some of this if you need to. I've got Phyllis Beam.
Hello. I live in the second house, and we've been there 15 years. I came when Ecovery came to the commission to start, and they wouldn't even let me find out anything about it. And I'm for recycling, I think it's great, but we've lost our backyard. You cannot go out in the backyard without hearing a roar the whole time, and then when the clouds are over us, it gets louder at night, you know, I couldn't sleep. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous what's happened. And now they've put a, they want to rezone the property next to us and behind us, which I'm told Ecovery wants to move in there. That's going to take our privacy, I mean, people coming in and out behind our house, and, you know, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't feel safe. And our property value has gone down, I know. I mean, we're both retired, and, you know, we don't have, we can't sit in our backyard, we can't sit out in front without hearing the noise. I get it in my bedroom because my doors face that area, but it's gotten horrible. I mean, it's just not something that, I heard the people complaining about the music, but ours is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, they work the whole time. I could understand if you had a business and you worked from eight till five or six, that would be all right, you know? Then you could go in your backyard when you got off of work and enjoyed it, you know, the quietness and the light, we can't see the stars, we've lost that because of all the lights. And it's just, it's really been hard to live, and I would like to move, but I don't think I could sell the house because of them. And it's really caused problems, and, you know, I would not like to see them get the property behind us, because then I wouldn't feel safe with people coming in and out right behind our house. And there are several homes, they just built two new homes on our, on our street, and they're starting to build up that area, you know? And here are the people, poor people, I feel sorry for them if they get that house and they realize they can't get in their backyard and not hear this roar. And then we'll hear the cars, we'll hear the backup, I'll hear beeps, you know, just different sounds. And I've tried earplugs, a friend of mine gave me a sound machine. I said, "That's not good," because the sound's like that. It's a constant sound, I've already got that, you know, it's not going to help. But, you know, I would appreciate you all thinking about this and our issues that we have as neighbors, and, you know, we enjoy our area, but it's taking it away from us.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I have someone else sign up in opposition, I only have a first name, Palmer, or it might be your last name.
Hi, I'm Teresa Palmer, and me and my husband, we live in the northeast corner, that one little biddy-biddy square right there, adjacent, so our property is actually adjacent to Ecovery. And pretty much everything that everybody has said is true. I mean, it sounds like a thunderstorm behind my house constantly, which, I mean, I can, I can deal with that. One of my biggest concerns is the acquisition of the property next, next to it, because if you see where she was talking about that green, because my property is actually zoned agricultural, the green that's beside it, if they acquire that property and they expand, I will have Ecovery on three sides of my house. Three sides. Am I ever going to be able to sell my house? No. I have a seven-year-old daughter. How is that going to work whenever there's semis coming and going? Because they come and go down railroad now. So that's, you know, a huge concern that I have, and I know that that's what's happening, because after I bought my property, and there was a for sale sign, I called, for the, for that property beside us, I called the realtor and asked about maybe purchasing the little parcel that's right, right behind me, and was flat out told no, because that is the only easement from Ecovery to the rest of his property, and he was going to sell, and like, that was his plan. And that's just a conversation that I had with the realtor a few years ago. It's not for sale, I don't think it's for sale anymore, I don't know what's going on with it, but I know it's been farmed. So that's, just in looking forward, that's a huge concern that I have right now.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Arp, you or the applicant, either one or both, let you.
I was going to say, can I, with the.
You need to come up to the microphone.
I was just saying, can I add two things before?
If you want to come to the mic, yes. Give us, give us your name.
Okay. I'm Shelley. My husband spoke first, we are in the old farmhouse, so that house has been there since 1937, so way before everything here. That house had original wall, and then a new wall, and a thick wall, and it's been bricked over, so our walls are usually like, they're thick. And we do hear it, two, three, four o'clock in the morning through our bedroom, womp, 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 and it shakes the windows. But that's not really the point, the point is, is like they're saying, we know that in May, there is going to be another meeting, that they want to take that agricultural that backs up to all of our houses and zone it M1, so that they can.
I know y'all keep bringing that up.
I know, I know we're not, I know, I know we're not doing anything about that, but I will say this on what they have going back to them overstepping their M1. I bought that house in January of 2017, and they have expanded twice since '17. They have went back. They have went back and when they went back, we lost all of our kind of buffer trees. They have lights that shine directly into our carport and into our house. And then they also expanded that way. And they do have trucks between them and Budweiser. When trying to go to work, we are stuck with 18-wheelers and they're not supposed to have that with the M1 either, or it's not supposed to be impeding. So I just wanted to add that. They've expanded twice already.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Arp?
I'm the engineer for the project, did the site plan. I was really here to answer questions about the site plan, but I can probably answer some of those questions. You know, it's got a, it started as a grinding, all types of materials, and now it's more specialized into aluminum. They did add the melts, that's the furnace and you can't really shut down the furnace because of the cost of restarting as far as the electrical cost. And that's probably what you hear, but they do run essentially 24/7 because of that furnace. The, the new project is a sorting building that's gonna take the ground-up material and it's got some high-dollar sorters, so it'll be a little more precise in how it sorts the ground-up aluminum, separates the copper, the aluminum, the brass, gets rid of the ferrous. So, any other questions about it?
All right. Any questions for the applicant's representative?
I do, I have a question. In the new building, do you know if it's gonna be constructed with materials that would eliminate sound outside?
As far as I know, it's just a standard metal warehouse, you know? It's, it's housing, a lot of conveyor belts and sorters and, so machinery.
Anybody have any other questions for you? All right, Mr. Braga, did you want to speak? Okay.
Hey, my name is Sergio and I'm here just to answer some questions about the design and I'm just helping the design of the buildings.
Okay.
And I, I want to thank the, the planning commission staff because they, they are very helpful in the process to submit all the drawings. I apologize for everybody here who lives nearby E. Covery. We, we have no responsibilities or anything with the.
Yeah, you, you, you like to face me and speak to that, Mike.
I apologize to the guys who live nearby E. Covery. And I'm pretty sure E. Covery, as the owner of the, the facility, they, they have a high interest to solve all the problems. If you can give us the name and number and contact information, I'll put the owner of E. Covery straight, directly in contact to you guys to try to save it, to solve any problem with sound, dust, or anything come from the, the build, the, the industrial part of E. Covery. There is one thing I'd like to talk about, the buffer is still not complete because we have a, a new building on the northeast, northwest side and we designate an area of buffer on the northeast corner is still not complete because we're still on the construction. That corner over there on the northeast side. And for this project now, we define an area between railroad and the buildings of E. Covery to be also a buffer. And we're willing to improve the buffer if we need. Right now, the buffer will be 75 feet, but we're willing to improve the buffer maybe for another 75 feet, 100 feet. We need to, we need to draw and find out the, because it's that corner over there when you see the, looks like a pond connecting to the other ponds. It's just something we have to study.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions?
All right, anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Was there anyone else that, that's all I had signed up, was there anybody else that wanted to speak? All right, come up and give us your name. Try not to repeat a whole lot of what we've already heard because we, we get the gist of that, so.
All right. My name is Jason Devine. I live on Cabinet Shop Road, about a quarter mile from him. So, you know, he spoke of the inside building and that, but most of the noise is coming from outside. Equipment, backup alarms, you know, banging of, you know, stuff on concrete and stuff like that. So it's not the, I don't believe it's the inside buildings that are causing the problem because most of that is probably for storage anyway. So it's an outside dust and, and that, so that's what I had to say.
Okay. Thank you. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am.
I don't normally do this, so I live on Cabinet Shop Road, about a quarter of a mile. It's right behind E. Covery. Nobody said anything about the smell, but I've lived there 50 years. I love to work in my yard and sometimes the smell is so bad, I cannot stay out there. And I have even seen ash from the place fall on places in my yard and on the rooftops. That's just.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Who else? Thought I saw more hands, maybe y'all repeated. All right, okay. I'm gonna let you folks speak if you want to speak because you sat here all night, just like we, like we have, so to be fair, I want everybody to get your opportunity, okay? I'm, I mean that, so it is getting late, but we're gonna let everybody speak.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Deemer. I'm the architect of the project.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the audience something.
Well, if you can ask me and I'll ask them.
All right.
What, what's your question?
Well, anybody with complaints need to complain to the building department. They don't need to complain to the county because you didn't issue the permit that created the construction.
Well, yes, we did. We, we actually approved both of the.
Well, you approved, right, you approved the plans, but you didn't issue the.
Not the building permit, you're right.
The permit, right, the building permit.
So what's your question?
Well, I don't have a question, I'm just making the statement that these people need to complain to the building department.
Okay.
If the contractor's doing something that he shouldn't be doing, then that needs to be reported to the building department.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Yeah, you can come on up. I will say this, I'm not, let's do twice though, okay? So.
Hi, my name's Elaine Giles. I live probably, I would say three-quarters miles from E. Covery. My husband leaves around, you know, early in the morning, around 4:30 in the morning to go to work. You can hear the noise, you can hear the people, the vehicles. The traffic has really increased since they put the business there, which that's normal. But one of the complaints that I have is that whenever you turn on Railroad Avenue, which, you know, like if you're turning off of 64, County Road 64 onto Railroad Avenue to go down to any of these other houses, the first thing you see is this huge spotlight hits you in the face and you have to adjust to it before you can see the road. But still, the smell, the, the dust, the, and like one of the ladies said, the ash and stuff that you see in your yard, you cannot even get out and walk around that area any longer because the smell, the debris and everything that is accumulating and coming from that area, but the noise is really the worst thing. And we have people that even live further than I do that complain about the noise, but they're not here tonight, so I'm standing in for them, but, uh, anyway.
All right.
That's one of the things that we, we're really concerned about.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else? Wait a minute, I got somebody coming up.
Thank y'all for hearing me out. My name is Chad Stilner. I've only lived here about five years and I can tell you that within that five years, it's changed dramatically on the E. Covery side of it. I live directly behind what, what you see the cell tower is there and pretty close to Lisa and Preston Riles there. Unfortunately, everybody's making it aware that there's a smell and that there's sound, but I don't think anybody understands, the smell is more like a sulfur and it definitely is an irritant, for sure. So whatever chemicals they are using to decompose or, or, you know, bring these chemicals down with, it is very fierce. And you can't literally sit in your yard most of the time because you get whiffs of it or there's big waves of it depending on how the air's traveling. And when we say sound, it's more like mortar shells when they're dropping, dropping maybe the casts out onto solid concrete. It will physically shake your house. Our windows and, and half, half your home interior-wise does that, that decibel lift. So I just wanted to make that kind of clear and put that out there for everybody. It's not that we believe in industry, for sure, but there's gotta be some control on it and some health value to it as well because we are a residential area, you know, we have our peace and quiet and unfortunately, it's getting worse as they develop. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Did you want to speak? All right. Uh, no repeats.
Specific to this building?
Quickly.
Is proposed for storage? He just said it was gonna have machinery and conveyors and stuff and all this other stuff in.
Yeah, we, we heard it too. All right. But thanks for the reminder. All right, anybody else? All right. It's getting late, but I, we, we got, there's a lot to digest on this one. So, questions for staff? Selena, do you need to say something first?
Um, I'm, I'm kind of surprised with all these complaints because our department was unaware of them. I don't recall receiving any calls or letters or emails, but if they have issues, they're more than welcome to email us. We have a citizen serve portal on our website. You can put a complaint in, email us, call us, let us know because we were completely unaware of all this.
Selena, do you have a slide with the M1 uses?
Yes.
Or there's any, where does it? Okay.
I was gonna ask a question about how we, what's, what's the process for us to review whether this would be considered a light industrial use? And I don't, maybe that's where Jamie was gonna, was going with this and, you know, when we first started hearing about some of the uses here, I went to this page in our packet and started looking at it and started logically thinking, are the things we hearing representative what the permitted uses are in an M1 light industrial district? And frankly, to me, it doesn't sound like they are. And I know, I don't have the M2 classification in front of me to see what it is, so, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm coming to the point, or trying to ask the question is, did this initially start as an M1 type use that has now evolved to an M2 type use that we need to go back and evaluate? And whether this is, whether, whether this has evolved kind of beyond what was originally intended to be with, with this classification?
That's correct. Um, it, on the screen on 8.1.1, it, it describes what light industrial should be and I believe someone read that off. I don't have the M2 in front of me to describe what that consists of.
Can we pull up the definition for light industrial uses? Is there a definition?
It's not, it's not specifically defined in the zoning ordinance and so that's why you go to the 8.1.1 generally about what it is. And then Maggie and I have been going through the zoning ordinance right now chart to try to see where this description is, but I don't know exactly what's going on there and they probably don't either because they're not going in and the applicant didn't tell us exactly what's going on in all these buildings. So I, from the legal standpoint, have some questions about where they fit within the zoning ordinance and the M1 classification that we're looking at right now, just based on the public hearing's testimony, to see where they fit in, honestly, and, and I have some questions about it.
And I'll chime in. I think historically, and I'm talking 10 years ago or something, that this used to be some type of light industrial facility where they removed precious metals from televisions and things of that nature. And I remember the first time we received an application, like two years ago since I've been in the department, I just assumed that they were having a, a lot of success with that operation and expanding to small little site operations. This public hearing today has been very enlightening because in our past approvals, I don't think we've had any members of the public come. And so what we're hearing today is the first time a description that this is, um, it sounds different than what we maybe understood what was going on in, in these facilities. And so we're kind of caught off guard ourselves on this. There, it turns out, I misspoke earlier, industrial uses are defined, but I, it appears to almost mirror exactly the 8.1.1 and then a similar description with the general, but then there's a table of permitted uses that goes into more detail by trying to identify the types of things. And, um, you know, the, the public has raised some great questions as to where this falls.
All right. Any other questions?
Um, in the conversations, I mean, obviously you've been caught with the, with the citizen concerns here. Has there been any discussion with the, the company and your offer to talk to the owner of the company, to have these people talk to the owner of the company? Does that relate to an appetite to acquire some of this property that's particularly close? And I don't know whether there's an appetite to sell, but I just throw that out as, as maybe a, somewhat of a solution if there're willing parties on the buy and sell end.
That's gonna be kind of, just like, that's gonna be kind of obviously complicated to negotiate from the floor. I mean, it's great for you to throw out a thought like that, that's something that the applicant would obviously have to.
It does, my question of where this fits in and, and, and is this to, you know, a commissioned site plan or is this potentially a rezoning question that we're looking at instead from the legal standpoint?
I, I, that's what I'm thinking is maybe the staff needs to look at it a little bit further and decide if it fits with this or if it's something else or what would you like?
Go ahead.
Thank you for your, thank you for your understanding. I'm not very good in communication, but I have a suggestion. The county has a code enforcement guide, right? And we are open, we are open doors. We like to invite any neighbor, any personnel of the county to come and visit us and we can work together to find a solution. Aiden did the tests and we, we comply with everything, with the dust, with the noise, with everything. But we are open to suggestions. We, we, we're here to, I'm not a company, but I'm pretty sure I can tell, tell you. We can have a visit with the neighbors and get to the solution.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your offer. I think we, I, I think there's gotta be some, definitely a look at and, and find out. Not that I don't believe a thing that's been, I think everything's, appreciate you folks coming out and sitting all the way to the end of this meeting to share that. I think it was important to you. I think it's, it warrants us checking into it further. And so I have no problem. What, well, I can't say that because I, I can't make it. What do you guys want to do?
Can I make a motion to table it?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make that motion.
Let me close the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I officially have not done that, so I just closed the public hearing. Now you can make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item.
Okay. Till June again?
Are y'all next month? Would y'all prefer to be on next month? Would y'all prefer to be on next month?
We have to next month.
I think.
And I need to say that the conveyor of the optical sort of stuff is paid for in order to...
Apparently they have equipment on the way, so I, I think in light of that, it's going to be a long agenda next month again. But I think it makes sense to go ahead and, uh, put them on next month's, assuming they can get these issues resolved or these questions resolved.
So is your motion to table till next month's meeting?
Table till next month, yes.
Motion to be made to table next month?
Second.
Mr. Bull, you're second to motion. Any question or comments?
I have two comments. So in between that time, we'll find out if it's M1 or M2 or different type of rezoning. And then the second is, um, can Ashley Campbell address some of the pollutants in the air that they're talking about with the ash?
I'm sure she would love to do that.
Yeah.
She has nothing to do.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll go look into that question.
I'd like to know if that's real or if it's coming from this place or somewhere else.
Sure. Great, that's a great question.
And I think in the meantime, you, you've heard the concerns, so you guys might want to start, uh, working towards some solutions to that too and, and have answers for us at the next meeting. So we have a motion on the floor. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion is approved. That's the last item on our agenda. So real quickly, any public comments? Anybody sign up for public comments? I think everybody's probably already spoke. All right, staff reports?
I'm only, thank y'all for hanging out. I didn't think we were going to go past seven, otherwise I would have provided snacks tonight, but, uh, here we went, so.
I don't have any reports, um, for this month. Legal counsel.
All right, I'm back. Let's just go ahead. Our next meeting is May 4th. We are adjourned.
Got some bad news, Mr. Chairman.
You got bad news?